All right, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming today. I'm going to get it called to order right at 1:30 on the dot. Couple of housekeeping matters before we get started. There were several emails that were sent in to staff with requests to read them into the record. I've spoken with staff. What we've done is we've given them to the clerk's office to include with the minutes. There were some that were on both of the issues, quite frankly, with respect to today's program. So anyone that wants to see those, certainly they will be included in the minutes. Beyond that, our meeting that was scheduled for July 7th, which was supposed to be the first meeting back from the break, or I suppose will be if we exclude today, is, there is a lot on the agenda. So it sounds like it's going to be better to move that to 2:00 PM from 5:00 PM on the 7th unless someone has an objection. So we're going to go ahead and do that. We'll move the July 7th meeting to 2:00 PM. So that's going to be a long one. Other than that, I understand we have a lot of folks here on the mask proposal as a result. I do believe we have people, as I understand from staff, wrapped around the building, unless someone objects. And if someone here does object, I'm happy to extend the time. For the folks that weren't specifically invited either by staff or by one of the commissioners, we're going to adhere to a strict two-minute time limit. Normally, we have a three-minute time limit, but in respect for everyone that otherwise would have to hang out outside and suffer in ninety-something degrees, I don't want to do that to anyone. So again, with the exception of the folks that are invited by either staff or by a specific commissioner, any of the commissioners, we're going to adhere to a two-minute time limit. So with that said, you'll notice I'm wearing a mask today. It's not a fashion statement by any means, but what I did is I pre-recorded the intro, at least my intro, for the mask regulation proposal, and Logan's got that so that I'm not sitting here basically hugging the microphone. It's about five or six minutes, so I'm just going to ask Logan to go ahead and roll that audio, and then we'll move on to public comment after we address any guests to the commission.
Governor DeSantis wants individual counties to make the decision on masking requirements because different counties have different needs. Pinellas County, for instance, has over 327 times the population density of Liberty County. Masking may be absolutely necessary in one and pointless in the other. It's necessary here. Brevard County is facing a situation in which every major health system supports masking, and some have expressed profound concern about their continued ability to maintain quality of care and to treat patients if their workers continue to fall ill and, as a consequence, are unable to report to work. If we do nothing, Brevard County may become Florida's first third-world county. A third-world county is a county in which timely access to quality medical care is uncertain. I find even the possibility extremely disturbing. Yesterday, while avoiding commentary on public policy, Health First President and CEO Steve Johnson advised me in pertinent part as follows, and I quote, "Following the CDC guidelines, which include recommendations to wear masks in public, maintain social distancing, and regularly wash your hands is the best way to protect the health of the community and our associates." Health First implemented a mandatory masking policy for everyone at all of our locations, both clinical and nonclinical, including our administrative offices. For example, I personally wear a mask at work. As a healthcare provider, it is our obligation to ensure our workforce remains healthy and available to care for our community. While I believe this conveys the crux of Mr. Johnson's comments, his full commentary is available should anyone wish to see it. In an email to a local mayor, Health First Senior Vice President and COO of Health Plans, Matthew Jurell, stated in pertinent part, quote, "What will help us, however, is if everyone wears masks." Jeffrey Stahlnaker, Health First Chief Physician Executive, stated in pertinent part, quote, "Health First believes a universal masking policy will help slow the spread of this terrible virus and protect the health of your loved ones and neighbors. Wearing masks will also preserve our ability to treat patients who are ill and safeguard the health of our medical professionals on the front lines providing care. Our policy decision doesn't only impact COVID patients. It impacts anyone who shows up to the ER needing treatment. Do you want to wait 12 hours to have a bone set or 18 hours to get a laceration stitched? I certainly don't. Sure, heart attacks and strokes will be triaged and given priority, but the vast majority of patients will suffer. The bulk of folks who say this is unconstitutional have no formal legal training. Maybe they watched Law &amp; Order or Night Court, but there is a reason the practice of law is a regulated profession. Because so many people's legal opinions are objectively incorrect as a matter of law. One can be an excellent IT professional but know very little about the legal system despite feeling an unjustified level of expertise. If any speakers wish to opine as to legal issues, please let the commission know if you're licensed to practice law in the state of Florida, or we may simply assume you're not, and your opinion may be weighed accordingly." I have yet to hear anyone who claims that the proposal is unconstitutional specifically cite any portion of either our federal or our state's constitution as the basis for their meritless claim. Not surprisingly, every challenge of which I am aware, seeking an injunction against a local government for implementing a universal masking requirement, has failed to achieve so much as either an emergency injunction or a temporary restraining order. It's not been for a lack of lawsuits, the suits simply have no merit. If masks only protected the wearers, we wouldn't be having this discussion. This has little to do with protecting the mask wearer. It's about protecting the community, most especially frontline hospital workers. So long as you're not behind the wheel, if you want to drink until you pass out or swim through sewage, that's your decision as you're basically harming yourself. It's a perversion of the concept of freedom to think that you have the right to expose others to a profoundly elevated risk of harm, in this case, an airborne pathogen, due to selfishness, ignorance, or misguided interpretation of the concept of freedom. We tell folks they can't drive drunk because we don't want them harming others. We tell folks they have to keep their dogs leashed while outdoors so those dogs don't bite others or cause a car wreck running into the street. We tell folks they have to have car insurance so that they don't cripple someone and have inadequate resources to pay for their treatment. We have child labor laws to protect children even if their parents would be okay with them working eighty hours per week while going to school. We require physicians and attorneys be licensed to protect the public from the unscrupulous as well as the misinformed and overly confident. Don't tell me it's your right to put an infant in a car without a properly installed car seat. It's not. You have no right to physically harm others without their consent. Anyone who claims it's their right to drive while intoxicated is simply wrong. So too are those who claim they have the freedom to infect others, absolutely wrong. Government has broad police powers to protect its citizens, including ensuring public health, all the more so during a local state of emergency, declared as a result of a pandemic in which there exists legitimate, expert, and professional concern that quality of medical care in the county may degrade substantially if nothing is done. I am confident our county attorney, Ms. Bentley, was not awake at night out of fear of impending lawsuits as a result of a masking requirement. The overwhelming majority of folks who say that masks are ineffective at reducing the spread of COVID have no formal medical training. Maybe they watched Doogie Howser or Grey's Anatomy, but there is a reason the practice of medicine is a regulated profession. One can be an excellent mechanic or real estate agent but know very little about the medical system despite feeling an unjustified level of expertise. If any speakers wish to opine as to medical issues, please let the commission know if you're licensed to practice medicine in the state of Florida, or we may simply assume that you're not, and your opinion may be weighed accordingly. Also, if you're a physician, either an MD or a DO, please let us know so that we may refer to you as doctor. Every single hospital administrator and every single physician, both MDs and DOs with whom I've communicated, have been in favor of face masks. All have agreed that masks reduce the spread. Every, single, one. The majority of physicians' assistants and nurse practitioners have been in favor of masking. I know of one in either category who appears less than fully supportive. There's a reason both the Florida Department of Health and the CDC recommend face coverings. It's not to make a fashion statement. Mass masking is critical in protecting essential workers, including hospital workers. Two months ago, there was an article in the Journal Lancet which stated in pertinent part, and I quote, "Controlling harms at source, masking, is at least as important as mitigation, handwashing." The bottom line is that if we don't act soon, we may well face a horrible situation which will require that we take even more drastic and extreme measures that are entirely avoidable if we act now. I don't want to shut any businesses down. I don't want to cancel outdoor events. I don't want to turn tourists away. Help me avoid hurting the local economy in the coming weeks and months, and help me protect local healthcare workers now. They put their health at risk for us, and we need to step up for them and for our community. I'm proposing that we implement a masking requirement where all those entering businesses be required to cover their nostrils and mouth with a fabric barrier. Those eating, drinking, and exercising would be exempt, as would anyone who's actively on supplemental oxygen. Anyone with a diagnosed medical condition precluding them from wearing a mask, for instance, asthma or COPD, would be exempt. Clearly, if one is undergoing a dental or facial medical procedure, they wouldn't be required to wear a face covering. The face covering would not have to be anything fancy. A piece of an old shirt would suffice. I'm also open to expending CARES Act funds as needed in obtaining masks for low-income residents as well as for those who are unable to source masks regardless of their income. Our sister county, Seminole County, took this step yesterday. Let's join them, nearby Daytona Beach, Eastern Florida State College, the Florida Institute of Technology, and an increasing number of local governments, and show that we have the courage to do what's needed and what's right.
All right, thanks, Logan. I appreciate you getting that. I know that we have several folks that are lined up here. Who do we have first? You know, we have one on the phone, and then Maria Stahl and Edward Lofton. Let's go with Edwin Lofton, if we could, from Parrish. Welcome, sir. Logan, I'm not getting any audio from his mic. Let's try that again.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm still not hearing anything.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Third time's the charm? Hang on, I think we're having some issues with that. Yeah, we're not getting anything. Hold on, I know Dawn's coming down right now.
The commissioners are in here, and they can hear us naturally.
They're afraid.
Oh, hold on.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, and I do hear some screaming in the background. I just will instruct any of the deputies, if anyone's preventing an individual from speaking or being disruptive, regardless of what they are or aren't saying, you know, please escort them out. I think we have enough people here, and we need to be respectful of everyone that speaks. All right, Mr. Lofton, I apologize, if you would, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, distinguished members of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners. My name is Edwin Lofton. I am the Senior Vice President of Integrated and acute Care and the Chief Nursing Officer of Parrish Medical Center. I am a doctor-prepared registered nurse. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today on this important matter of public health. The COVID-19 pandemic is real. This virus is highly contagious and is deadly to those of us who are medically frail and elderly. It was not and is not to be taken lightly. Parrish Healthcare Care Partners were swift to mobilize our COVID-19 response. As early as February of 2020, the only early onset of the COVID pandemic, we initiated our Emergency Management Incident Command structure, which remains in full activation. We did not and have not relaxed our COVID response focus. Following closely the CDC recommendations and the Florida Department of Health, we have implemented a number of safety protocols, all focusing on preventing and slowing the spread of the virus, and especially protecting the health and safety of our fellow care partners, employees, medical staff, and volunteers, patients, and the community served. Safety protocols which include but are not limited to the adoption of a universal masking protocol since April of 2020. Everyone inside Parrish healthcare facilities since April of 2020 has been required to wear a face mask. Wearing face mask covering in public, especially when social distancing is not possible, protects you and those around you. We know COVID-19 can be spread by people who do not have symptoms and do not know that they are infected. That's why it's important for everyone to wear cloth face coverings in public settings and to practice social distancing, staying at least six feet away from each other. Wearing a face mask, a face covering during a global pandemic when it can potentially save lives is not an infringement of personal right but an act of love for yourself and for your fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lofton. And now we have Maria Stahl, and then also Dr. Williams as well on the line. Logan, whoever you want to line up first between the two of them.
I was going to say, if you want to do Dr. Williams, since he's on the line, I'm fine with that, whatever you choose.
Well, if you're up there already, let's get your role in, if you would.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just want to give everyone an update. I did send the update to you all on Saturday. Currently, we have 1,792 cases. That's seventy-seven that reported out today. I want to reiterate that these are people. If somebody tested twice, they don't get counted twice, they get counted once. We've had seventeen deaths in our county. Three of those deaths have been in long-term care facilities. The labs, we, like I said, we had seventy-seven report out today positive. That's a nine percent positivity rate. Overall, we've had 43,865 labs at a four percent positivity rate, which has increased, if you remember, over the last month, month and a half. Our overall positivity rate was running around two percent, and our daily positivity rate was running about point five to one point five percent. So over the last week, our positivity rate has gone from seven point four to twelve point five percent. Our long-term care facilities, which we continue to monitor, we have one hundred sixty-seven in our county. Sixty-three of those facilities now have a case of COVID amongst either the residents or their staff. We have twelve residents and thirty-four staff that have tested positive. Hospitals, currently, as of the stats today, we have seven patients on a ventilator, we have forty-nine patients in the hospital, we have twelve of those in ICU. And to reflect on how that has increased, June 24th, which is about a week ago, we had eighteen in the hospital and three on vents. So that's pretty much doubled. If we continue on that course next week at this time, we will have ten to eleven on a ventilator, and we will have eighty in the hospital. Our testing throughout the county that is being done, Eastern Florida State College, Omni Health, Parrish, ourselves, Health First, everyone is surging in their testing right now. Eastern Florida State College is doing about a thousand a day. We and Health First are both booked out through next week. Edwin, are you the same? You're booked out for about next week. I can tell you our testing for the month of June, you know, our target was two percent. We've done three point five percent of our population this month. We've done seven percent overall, and that's amongst all of us. I can also tell you that all of our labs are backed up a little bit at this point. Asymptomatic individuals being tested are waiting anywhere between seven and ten days for their results. On June 20th, a public health advisory was reissued and updated by our state surgeon general. In that public health advisory, it was stated all individuals should wear face coverings in settings where social distancing is not possible, with the exceptions being children and those with medical conditions. They reiterated any vulnerable populations and those over the age of sixty-five should limit interactions outside the home. Social gatherings, we should not be having social gatherings over fifty people and maintaining distances. We are seeing a trend, the same as the trends statewide, of the younger population testing positive. The average age in Brevard County right now is between twenty and forty years old. Some of those are asymptomatic, and it's important to know that asymptomatic and presymptomatic can still spread the virus. The average age we're now seeing in the hospital ICUs are fifty-four, and the average age in med surg is fifty-eight. That has gone down quite a bit. One of the biggest, biggest concerns right now is even though the majority of the younger population are pulling out of this okay, when they transmit it to the elderly and the vulnerable population, we very well could be seeing a surge in our hospitals in the next several weeks. And we are working with our hospitals and long-term care facilities. Testing and contact tracing, we are still continuing to do that. We are getting assistance from other departments within the health department, and we're also being sent contact tracing staff from Tallahassee. And that's, oh, the last thing, last thing just to mention, we are number eighteen out of sixty-seven counties with the number of cases we've had. We're number eleven out of sixty-seven counties with the number of tests that we've done. Statewide, today, there were six thousand cases reported at a fourteen point five percent positivity. So if any one, Commissioners, have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Dr. Stahl, I'm apologizing. I apologize for asking you something, I didn't give you a heads-up in advance. As far as the folks that are asymptomatic, who may still transmit it, I'm just curious, of those folks who are tested that are asymptomatic, do you have any idea in terms of what the percent positivity of rate for them might be? Is it roughly what the positivity rate is overall, or is it lower or higher?
I don't have that information in front of me to actually answer. What I can tell you is we are seeing a lot more symptomatic patients coming through for testing.
All right, I appreciate it. Any other questions for Dr. Stahl? Commissioners, Nardi?
I'm just looking at the Department of Health's website, like Brevard County specifically, and I know it showed like we had two hundred and fifty positive cases on the 26th of June, and the 27th and the 28th is both eighty-four and eighty-six. You know, that number like went down by over half, and now you're saying seventy-seven. Is it possible we're back on a downward trend? I mean, I know that's wishful thinking, but just looking at the number of people we tested during those times, it shows that like a higher percentage, but if we're testing more people, and I know we're testing a lot of asymptomatic people because a lot of those people are my patients, I mean, what does this mean? How is this an accurate number if we're not seeing an increase necessarily?
I think it's way, way too early to determine a trend, three days.
Right, exactly, and that's...
And it's also, was there a one-day spike of labs reporting out, a bunch of them reporting out in one day? So I think we have to look at it over a longer, longer length of time to determine, was there a peak, and now we're flattening? I don't know, because you're right, we were, what, two hundred and fifty, then we were eighty-some, eighty-some, and then seventy-seven today. So that, that, I don't know. What was the second part of your question? I'm sorry.
I was just talking about the number of people, like the number of actual tests that we're performing.
Right.
Has gone up significantly, too. So we're testing a lot of asymptomatic people who are testing positive because all they have to do is drive through Eastern Florida.
Right. And I, what I think is more important is looking at the positivity rate.
Right.
The actual positivity rate, which has also jumped up along with the testing. Early on, you're absolutely right, early on, we were only doing symptomatic testing. And then broadened it as a strategy nationally and statewide expanded. So, you know, we are picking up more, obviously asymptomatic, and I don't know what percentage of asymptomatic and symptomatic are there. But the positivity rate's increasing, the labs are increasing.
And I had one more question. I was wondering if you had any knowledge based on, you know, looking at some reporting that at least through the month of May, the CDC was lumping together antibody-positive tests with regular positives? Have they stopped doing that in their data collection? Because I can't find something that says that they are no longer doing that.
Nationally, I don't know. Statewide, they're separating it out. Statewide, they're having a separate antibody report and a separate, you know, regular report. The point-in-time testing, not the antibody, but the point-in-time regular testing is getting reported on the regular cases.
Okay.
So the PCR testing is the other report then? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Ma'am, let me ask you a question, because before, we weren't testing the eighteen-year-olds. So when did we start including the younger-aged people as far as being able to be tested?
At the health department, we've been testing them all along. So the younger population has been tested. Medfast Urgent Care has been testing the younger population all along.
So the whole time period of someone was symptomatic and they were eighteen years old? Because there was a time period, we were talking, they could only go if they were like in a certain category. So when did we open that up to start including that? Because there was a time period we did.
You're absolutely right. I don't know, I would say maybe a month ago.
Month ago?
About, yeah, I would have to look at the exact date. What we were, we truly were finding is that the symptomatic individuals were dropping off, and we had the capacity to increase. So we did at that time, along with the strategy. But we've been doing the children, Medfast has been doing the children, and we still right now are the only ones doing the pediatrics. I can say some pediatric groups are checking, are testing also. So some are being done in their private offices.
Okay, so even in the drive-throughs, we've always done the, well, you told me about a month ago is when we made that change. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Dr. Stahl? Thank you so much, Dr. Stahl.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I think the last invite to you of either staff or the commission is Dr. Williams on the line. I think he's calling in from Alaska?
Yes, that would be correct, Commissioner Loeb. Thank you for inviting me, and thanks.
[inaudible]
Can you hear me now? Testing one, two, three?
I apologize, Doctor. Go ahead.
No worries. Thank you for inviting me, Commissioner Loeb, and the other commissioners. I would like to put things in perspective. I'm a physician, I'm an emergency medicine physician. I was the chairman of emergency medicine at Woodstock Health Center for ten years. I'm also an emergency medicine services physician. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm the EMS director for the cities of Cocoa, Rockland, Hightesville, and Cape Canaveral Air Force Station. So my specialty is emergency medicine and EMS services. Also, I am the president and chief medical officer of medical care centers. See over one hundred thousand per year in Brevard County. That's primary care, frontline, urgent type medical practice. I would like to speak from the beginning, epidemic or pandemic in Brevard County, when I was speaking to the fire department. I was speaking to them about the prospect of coronavirus precautions that we were taking. On March 17th, the commissioners took a very thoughtful consideration of closing down our businesses, encouraging social distancing, hand washing, and other measures to prevent the virus before the peak. I think county commission and the Department of Health in Florida did a fantastic job of keeping our infectivity rate lower than the rest of the state. During the peak, we were about four percent, state was eight percent. And then, as the peak gradually went away, we went down to one percent, and we began to realize we needed to opening back up. And with such measures, the isolation and some of the COVID fatigue kind of set in on. And so what happened was, over the weeks subsequent to that, the past, the two weeks, when we started opening, we saw four percent. And over the past two weeks, if I could put the slide up for the Department of Health, you'll see that we had an increase before County to eight, nine percent where we are today. So what has happened? So we've done more testing, that is correct. We've done more testing, but we have an increased positivity rate in our population. So yes, we're doing more tests, we're contacting more people, the percentage of positive and negative is significantly more higher. And that is the important number here. So what are we seeing on the ground? I can tell you that currently, medicine is seeing over one thousand one hundred patients per day. For encounters, medical encounters, whether they're calling on the phone, whether they're waiting outside for a patient. But we, we're at this point, I'm going to be sneering from the line here, because our laboratories, laboratories, they are running out of tests, they're running out of the ability to test people in a timely fashion. We're having a hard time aspiring additional tests, and even if we get the tests, we're having to pump the labs doing the tests. So now we're seven days, ten days out on the results. So what's happening? People are going back to work, one person is positive, then ten other friends and family members are coming in to get tested. So what has happened? Well, we stopped our isolation, we started interacting more, we started opening our economy, which is all a good thing, because it's what we need to do. So what do we realize from what we did recently? We learned that putting in community practice measures, social distancing, isolation weren't decreasing the spread of virus. Now here's what we know about masks. An N95 protects medical workers and those people from contracting the virus. Procedure masks and other types of... and those people from contracting the virus. Procedure masks and other types of cloth masks prevent other people from getting it. So if you're wearing a cloth mask, it's not necessarily going to protect you. If someone's not wearing a mask, then they can get infected. So here is our paradigm. Everyone needs to bear some sort of face covering to this be beneficial to everybody. And that is the debate that's having to, why should, if I'm wearing a mask, I'm protected against that other person. I'm wearing an N95. So in consideration of others, it's what, what we've tried to do and tried to maintain that over the past four peaks, we still had an increase. So now we're at this point with county commission, and you were very good at proactively decreasing the incidence of infection in our county initially, but we've got to get back to opening businesses up. And so what I'm suggesting and recommending as a medical professional, to wear a mask when social distancing of six feet is not possible.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Loeb?
I apologize, Dr. Williams.
Is there any other questions you might want to ask me?
Any questions for Dr. Williams?
No.
No, sir. Thank you so much for calling in during your vacation. I really do appreciate it, sir.
Okay. Thanks for...
Stay safe. Watch out for whatever kind of bears may be up there.
Will do. Bye.
All right. We, we have a tremendous number of public comment cards here. We're up to 59 right now. So we're going to adhere pretty strictly, I think everyone else here is on the same page, to a two-minute time limit. If you haven't finished your sentence at the end of the two minutes, I'm certainly going to allow you to finish your sentence as long as it's not a compound sentence that includes a whole bunch of ands and then just really has another sentence attached to it. But in the interest of time and to get people out of the heat that may not be able to be accommodated inside, we are really going to have to stick to that two minutes. I'm going to go ahead and call it in the order in which folks signed up. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounced anyone's name. First one I have is Jason Searls from Melbourne.
Good afternoon. I don't even know where to begin since my time has been cut short by one minute by no cause of my own, but I will go in to say why I oppose this face mask policy. The first off, with the first gentleman spoke, talking about how face masks spread, prevent germs, and how Harris Corporation, that his place of business is doing. I've actually picked up one of these face masks here, and on the box it says it will not prevent the spread of viruses. You can take this mask, sneezed in your hand, and your hand will be wet. That's a sneeze. People sneeze. This does not go. According to the CDC website, I'm not a medical professional, but I am college educated and I know how to read. The CDC website states that the mask should be comprised of thickly woven fabric, multiple layers deep. Three or more should be needed to be somewhat effective. These masks and the masks that you see everybody wearing here, guaranteed do not meet those standards. And I would actually say that the woman that was speaking is saying that there is three deaths, 17 deaths and three for medical facilities. Where's your legislation to prevent those in long-term facilities from contracting viruses? There's been no legislation or anything put in force by this commission to protect the most vulnerable. Instead, you want to make everybody conform to your policies. I would tell you that your lack of legislation to educate the public is dumbfounding and that your time would be better spent to inform the public, not conform the public. This is an infringement on our rights. You don't tell me what shirt to wear, what shoes to wear. Why are you telling me that I must wear a mask? Because it would protect people. Sounds reasonable. But if you go and do the research what the CDC says and the masks that are being toted around this community, they are simply ineffective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have Giancarlo Mandato from Merritt Island. And just before you start up, sir?
Thank you.
Just, just to make it easier for everyone, I'm just going to say everyone's name. I know that the folks that are frequent flyers, that speak frequently, are used to saying their name and city. Don't worry about it. I want you to get all of your two minutes. So when I say it, unless you feel compelled to reiterate it, don't worry about it, okay? Thank you all. All right. I apologize, sir. Go for it.
I would like to explain the implications of government mandated masks. First, I will go through a couple of studies that mitigate and actually negate your stance saying they're good. First, according to the St. Luke's Life Sciences Institute Center and the University of Hawaii in 2008, they quote, "Found that the face masks used in healthcare workers has not been demonstrated to provide benefit in terms of cold symptoms or getting colds." A larger study is needed to definitely, definitively establish non-inferiority of face mask use. First study. Second, the Canadian Medical Association in 2016, they concluded that a random controlled trials and observational studies comparing N95 respirators and surgical masks have not shown any benefit, and they may have been underpowered. Third, 2020 study done in China by the West China Hospital in Situwan University on influenza effectiveness of N95 in surgical masks, they said, quote, "That compared with surgical masks, it is not associated with a lower risk of laboratory confirmed influenza. It suggests that N95 respirators should not be recommended for general public and non-high-risk medical staff." That is us, the general public. And yet you are trying to infringe on our rights and say that we have to wear what you want us to wear. Let me continue. Multiple other studies conclude that masks are not proven to significantly affect the general public. Further, the CDC has stated itself, "The only way for masks to work is if they are closely fitted." Like a gentleman before me said, no one in here has them truly closely fitted. Further, when you have to have them closely fitted, you're going to have to try and keep them closely fitted. What does that do? You have to touch your face to do that. Then, the CDC has said, you touch your face, you're going to start spreading that virus other, other places as well. You cannot assume and suppose that every single person in Brevard County will simply abide by the regulations of, "I'll clean my mask every hour, my, my dirty t-shirt's going to be clean." You can't assume that. Further, the government, we should have the right to decide if we want to wear a mask, just like somebody should decide if they want to wear a mask. Further, it's wrong for anybody. For example, let's say the government wanted to tell a Muslim woman with a hijab that what she's wearing incites violence based on Islamic terrorism. That's wrong. Yet you say that what we're wearing incites physical harm. And I think that's wrong and that should not be happening based on no proof. Mr. Loeb, change your opinion.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Of course.
All right. Next up, we've got Karen McCulloch from Viera.
Hi, I'm a community ambassador with the Florida Freedom Keepers. We're a constitution-based civil liberties organization with a focus on medical freedom. It's my hope you're actually going to consider the implications of what a mask mandate means to Brevard County and vote on the side of freedom. I have no issue with social distancing and I have no issue with people wearing masks if it is their choice. We live in the greatest country in the world, but it's great because of our freedoms. Once you mandate one medical decision, you've taken away a fundamental human right, our freedom of body autonomy. If you serve the community in order to uphold the Constitution, then you cannot support a mask mandate in good conscience. The whole world has been turned upside down for a virus with a 99% survival, excuse me, and not to at all minimize the 1%, but there are many viruses we come in contact with daily that people transmit that pose health risks. And yet, for this very survivable virus, the government is exercising control in ways that are threatening to the rights of the individual and the freedom that our military has fought for. It's also harmful to those of us with medical conditions that make wearing the mask an additional risk. By making a mandate, you take away our freedom of privacy. My medical conditions are mine, and I shouldn't have to share details with anyone in order to be allowed to get my groceries or to avoid fines or arrest. Our country is already split on important issues that need addressing, and we don't need anything else to deepen this divide. To have to justify not wearing a mask in order to shop or be in public is a hipoviliation, but people ask and make judgmental and threatening comments. Our law enforcement officers have important work to do in keeping our communities safe. Their resources should not be wasted on a matter that ought to be personal choice. And to all the pro-mask people, you're entitled to wear it. I would not discourage or condemn you, but I ask you, when will it come off permanently? Are you waiting for them to mix the very virus that you're trying to avoid into a cocktail of neurotoxins in aborted fetal cells and inject it directly into you? A vaccine has never before been successful for a coronavirus. And vaccine safety and efficacy has been stated to need 10 to 15 years of research and development. And they're still labeled by U.S. law as unavoidably unsafe. Yes, unsafe. Will you wear it indefinitely or are you okay with exchanging it for a rushed vaccine?
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next up, we have a gentleman named Charles Edwin Weatherford. I don't have a city listed on the card, so if you would, when you come up, please just let the clerks know for their records that your city of residence.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Charles Edwin Weatherford, Port St. John, Florida. I stand here today in opposition to this insanity, and I have five reasons. I definitely, myself and many others, question the effectiveness, effectiveness of masks. This is also an infringement of our, not only our natural, but our constitutional rights. And no, Commissioner Loeb, Commissioner Loeb, I am not an attorney or a, a medical, but I, I can read and I am pretty smart. So you had all the medical establishment here, gave them extra time, you cut the public's time down, you know, to two minutes. So I don't know if I'll get all this. But basically, the effectiveness is, is very questionable. You are giving medical advice, commissioners. You, you. What does a Hippocratic, Hippocratic oath say? Hippocrates. First, do no harm. Okay? Do no harm. Okay. This is a sliding slippery slope to totalitarianism. What is next? Forced vaccinations? Are you on the page with Mr. Gates, who is also not a medical doctor? He's a computer geek who happened to get very rich. Okay? This is unfortunate symbolism. I'm going to cover my mouth. I'm going to be muzzled. I abrogate my God-given right to free speech and to take in God's life. The heaven, you know, Genesis said, "God breathed." He breathed life into dust, you know? The Hindus believe in prana, you know, the Taoist and the Confucianisms, qi. It's all life force. You want to cut our life force off? No, sir. No, ma'am. I stand in opposition.
Sir, I apologize, but you're out of time. I've got to respect everyone's right to have the same amount. All right. Next up, we have Michael Douglas from Melbourne. I don't know if it's the actor or if it's a different Michael Douglas, but we will find out. If it is the actor, I certainly would appreciate an autograph after this. I see the similarity. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Loeb. I'm here this afternoon...
Sir, could you get a little closer to the mic or speak up some? I apologize.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Perfect. Thank you.
I'm here this afternoon on, on behalf of myself, simply to let you and the rest of the commissioners know that we are Americans. And what that means is that we have rights. And just barely 10 years ago, we were in the position as Republicans in a largely Republican county arguing that the government should not impose a mandate on us as individuals because we exist. That mandate went to the Supreme Court and they upheld it. Today, we're here saying, "Well, we're a local government. We have more authority." True, you, you do have some cases in support of that proposition, but the same principle remains. What is your limiting principle? Is it going to be tomorrow, you must all wear blue shirts? Thursday, you must all eat pepperoni pizza? Friday, eat pineapple pizza? Where is this limiting principle? And if I can prove the, the health benefits of it, are you okay with that? Secondly, you have the effectiveness of the mask argument. And as you correctly point out, I am not a medical professional. So while I will leave most of those arguments to others, I will simply point out that people fart. What does that mean? When you fart, people smell it. If this virus particle is larger than a fart, you will smell it whether you are wearing a mask or not. You will catch this virus. The third reason why I am opposed to the mask is very simple. You have to deal with the enforcement aspect. Do you want me to call 911 and say, "Sir, there is no one wearing a mask in this business?" I don't think you want to put law enforcement in this position. So let us remain free people and deal with our issues ourselves and price the risk appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have Ron Thomas from Cocoa Beach.
Good morning. My name is Ron Thomas. I am a committee man in 218. Okay, so this is not about health. Let's get real. This is about control. The main stat that we want to look at is the death rate. The morbidity rate is going down. The virus is running its natural course. The viral load is lower. And now as the virus runs through the lowest part of our population, which are 18 to 35, they are, most of them are showing asymptomatic. 90% declined in the death rate since April 21st. So this is Commissioner Loeb's personal move for control. And to illustrate that, he tells you that you can wear a cloth mask, which does nothing. So he's lying to you. This is about fear and setting us up for the second so-called wave. So they will, we will accept this type of control. He is a fear monger. He's brought in his professionals. CDC says it should be a recommendation. Governor DeSantis says it should be a recommendation. But Commissioner Loeb says, "You've got to wear a face mask." I'm against this. I oppose it. I appeal to the honor of voters and the commission that they reject this fear mongering on the part of our so-called Commissioner Loeb, who's not doing this for us. This is about him.
Thank you, sir. And it's pronounced Loeb. Next up, we have Anthony Johnson from Titusville.
All right. First, please let me qualify my prepared statement by pointing out that I hold a degree in chemical science with a focus in microbiology from Florida State University, and that I have been thoroughly trained in aseptic techniques, which just means creating an environment absent of germs such as viruses like COVID-19. The problem that we face is that almost every disposable or cloth mask being used by the general public today is not N95 rated and therefore does not stop the transmission of viruses. Viruses are extremely small and easily passed through the supermajority of these face coverings. The package even clearly states this. Bottom line is that is if it is not an N95 surgical mask or respirator, then it will not be effective in stopping the spread of COVID-19. And we cannot mandate N95 masks because they are needed at hospitals and we do not want to create another shortage. Now that we've established that non-N95 rated face coverings do very little to prevent the COVID-19 transmission, let's talk about what they will do. In practically every municipality across the nation that has enacted mandatory mask laws, the crime rate has soared. This is because criminals being allowed to openly hide their identity with a face covering are emboldened to commit more crimes, sometimes in broad daylight, which I'm sure many of you have seen examples of in the news lately. In Brevard County, we have more than 588,000 residents and there have only been 17 COVID-19 related deaths. This means that 99.99% of Brevard residents are alive and surviving in respect to COVID-19. We are not a hotspot. Non-N95 face coverings will not prevent the spread of COVID-19. I believe the best course of action is to continue the status quo of allowing local businesses to implement their own mask mandates, which is perfectly acceptable since businesses can make their own dress codes. I believe recommending businesses to implement face covering policies is acceptable by all Brevard citizens.
Thank you, sir.
Please do not create a mandate that will disenfranchise a large portion of the freedom-loving Brevard County population and will do little to prevent the transmission of COVID-19.
Thank you, sir.
Vote no on this mandate.
Have a good day, sir. All right. Next, next up, we have from Melbourne, Russell Rosicky.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Welcome.
My name is Dr. Russell Rosicky. I'm a registered architect and a father of four girls that are five and under. I live here in Viera. I also own two local businesses. And I think masks should not be mandated. I do, however, think people should take precautions to keep their own distance from one another. And if some still feel unsafe, those people should stay home. My wife and I personally worked alongside someone who had the virus in January. In close proximity for weeks, neither of us became ill or were affected by it. I soon took an antibody test and it came back negative. My own personal experience shows that the virus is not as communicable as some might think. I will not ask my children to wear a mask, nor will they go to school with one on. If possible, I'd recommend your commission to put this out to a vote to the residents in the county, and please let them choose. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have Nick Tombolides from Cocoa. Looking sharp, sir.
Good afternoon. Yes.
Yes. Well, I wanted to just comment very briefly on what you had said at the beginning of this speech, which was that only medical professionals and attorneys have the right to an opinion. I think that's sort of an affront to this very notion that we have of a republic. I mean, we're supposed to be a citizen-led government here, in which the people are in charge and the people have a seat at the table and can weigh in on such issues. So I frankly found that insulting. And I would also point out that one of your physician experts that you brought in to help you support this policy actually said that masks should only be mandatory, absent the ability to social distance. So he actually disagreed with your proposed policy, because your policy is a blanket policy applying to all public spaces. Here's the problem. You are proposing mandatory face masks. When something is mandatory, that means you plan to punish those who don't comply. What is the punishment going to be? Will it be a fine, an arrest? Will you send people to jail? I can see it now. A grandmother goes to a grocery store to get her meds. Maybe she left her mask at home, or perhaps she can't breathe with a mask on. Are you going to tell that granny she has the right to remain silent? Are you going to put her in handcuffs and haul her away to the county jail so she can spend the night around drug dealers and gang bangers? I don't think you guys have really thought this through. Our law enforcement have their hands full already. They should be going after real bad guys, not patrolling the pudding aisle at Winn-Dixie. So this idea, it's not only terrible, but it's also illegal. Our county charter and code give you no authority to do this. It violates the due process clause, the equal protection clause, and the privacy clause of the Florida Constitution. Ben Franklin said, "A person who trades liberty for security deserves neither." Thomas Jefferson said, "He preferred dangerous freedom to peaceful slavery." A life without liberty confined to cages by petty leaders with our every behavior controlled is no life at all. And for most of American history, we've understood that. Do the right thing, change required or recommend, keep granny out of the slammer, and let people be responsible for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tombalides. And I don't, you know, I'm trying my best here not to respond to every single individual, but I think if there's something factually misstated, that it may bear worth pointing out. So I do want to point out, I never said that only attorneys and/or physicians have the right to an opinion. I simply said that with an item that has profound questions involving legal issues or medical issues, that if someone is licensed to practice law or licensed to practice medicine, and there's a reason that licensure is required in the state, that they may want to identify that, because otherwise, I have as much expertise as an architect in determining an issue that's unfamiliar to me or outside the scope of my profession. Doesn't mean you're not entitled to an opinion, it just means you're not entitled to practice in that area. All right, next up, we have Susan Hammerling Hodges from Melbourne.
Thank you, Commissioner Lober. For disclosure, I am not a lawyer, but I do love law and order.
Excellent.
So for consideration, I am a small business owner in the community and also a healthcare provider licensed with the Board of Medicine of Florida. I've been, I've had a medical license with the Board of Medicine since 2001 in July. And I practice in dermatology, and I treat infectious diseases on a regular basis for over 20 years. So just a little bit of my background. And I have training like Dr. Isnerdy on microbiology and pathophysiology, so. To mask or not to mask is the question. Unfortunately, face masks have become a divisive partisan symbol recently. I believe in the Constitution as our founding document, and it was written as our enduring covenant. I believe our Constitution system must be preserved uncompromised for future generations. I support individual rights, limited government, and free enterprise. It is my body and my choice. If this mandate passes to include wearing masks at all times, I believe it's unconstitutional. I do believe there are some recommendations, and I have sent Commissioner Lober and discussed with some of the other commissioners, some other solutions. I understand there are good intentions with this mandate with the masks. It's to protect the public. Some people are scared to go outside because they don't feel safe or go to businesses or restaurants, and they want to continue with life. However, as a healthcare provider for the past 20 years, I do wear a mask when I do see patients, and I have become sick infrequently. Last year, I had about 20 patients with leprosy. Thank goodness, I did not catch leprosy. There are different skin conditions and other medical conditions where you can be asymptomatic. I spoke with the commissioner earlier, and people that are asymptomatic in my world and skin, somebody, you could give them a kiss, you can shake their hand, have sexual relations, and you can contract HIV, herpes simplex virus, condyloma. So there are, that is, that is an important fact.
Ms. Hodges, I apologize. I'm going to have to have you wrap it up in a fraction of a sentence.
All right. Conclusion, this can't be enforceable. What's the penalty? Just enforce businesses who do come in contact with people, and I think the companies need to advise, advertise upfront what their policy will be on masking.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right, next up, we have Jane. How would you try that? Jane Tratch from Titusville?
Pronounced T-Catch.
Could you speak up just a little? I apologize, ma'am.
Yes, it's pronounced T-Catch. Can you hear me?
T-Catch. All right, I apologize. Yes, ma'am, I apologize.
No problem. Okay, so the world is watching our country now more than ever as we continue to reopen in ignorance and permit the virus to spread, and this is unacceptable. Social distancing has been less possible as businesses reopen and try to act as if everything is normal again, and everything is not normal. Florida had over 9,500 new cases in one day, just one day. If this isn't screaming urgency, then I don't know what is. Responsible local leaders would be reminding us every day that this thing isn't over yet. Responsible local leaders would make the right decision for the public, even if it isn't the popular one. Masks are not foolproof, but even a low-quality mask can block respiratory droplets. There is enough scientific evidence to prove that combined with social distancing and proper hand hygiene, widespread use of masks could dramatically reduce transmission of the virus. It is your responsibility as the county commissioners to care for our community, and voting against a mask mandate today will only show your lack thereof. Mandate the masks is the absolute least thing you can do to protect us. The masks are not about protecting ourselves, but they are to protect others. A mandatory mask mandate would be the simplest solution to enhance the safety of the community. Masks may be uncomfortable and a slight inconvenience, but they are nothing in comparison to a ventilator. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Paul Ashworth from Titusville as well.
Hi, I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things. One was that, and this has to do with a couple of the studies that some people have cited, the mask is not about protecting yourself, it's about protecting other people. And as far as whether or not that's legal or not, we already have laws that both protect ourselves and protect other people. And when we drive a car, we're legally obligated to wear a seatbelt. That's a law that's legal, that requires us to protect ourselves. But we're also not allowed to text and drive, which, yes, that protects us, but it also protects the other people on the road. Because when you're distracted in driving, you're not just endangering yourself, you're endangering every other person on the road, whether it's a pedestrian, a cyclist. And that's why a mask mandate is legal. And we've seen that widespread mask use can slow the spread of the virus. Globally, if you look at some of the other countries that have had complete mask mandates, they do have slower spread of the virus. And public health is a justifiable use of the police powers. That's been shown over and over again in various Supreme Court precedents. And I just wanted to support you if you choose to vote for the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, we have from Merritt Island, Ray Mondo.
Hi, thank you so much.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. First and foremost, I am a person and a voice. And yes, I am not a lawyer or a doctor, but you should be here to support a voice and not those of a lawyer or doctors. So the previous statement you made is not what we, the people, voted you for. So how dare you look down on us? I feel offended almost. And I don't support forcing people making it mandatory to wear masks, because there is no significant proof that shows the mask will protect me from any virus. I believe that actually by wearing a mask and maintaining quarantine will lower our immune system and make us more susceptible to actually get it. Let's instead encourage people to build up the immune system by taking good care with natural food, so that the body will be able to fight it on its own. According to the journal Nature Medicine, researchers at the Peter Dort Institute for Infection and Immunity in Melbourne, Australia, it shows that even though COVID-19 is caused by a new virus, in an otherwise healthy person, a robust immune response across different cells types was associated with clinical recovery, similar to what we see in influenza. So you see, the cure is not mask and distance and mandating it, but gaining robust immunity through living normal and healthy lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, next, we have Laura Mahoney from Alabari.
Thank you. Just, it was really offensive, the opening thing from Mr. Lober, but not having a law degree. Liberty is supposed to be protected without having a law degree. You were elected to protect our liberties. Forced medical procedures have no place in a free society. You are afraid. This should not be a reason to make any mandate. Your decision would or could open up to all kinds of lawsuits, as is happening in Hillsborough presently. They are getting lawsuits against them because they've made a mandate like this. We all know there have been many deaths due to wearing of masks, even though our media fails to report these disturbing tragedies. From the very beginning of the COVID-19, there has been a major difference between factual information and the stories that have been told to the public by government and public officials. Neil Ferguson, who's of the Imperial College of London, and he's who Dr. Fauci got his, some of his information from, he predicted that tens of millions of people would die due to COVID-19 infection. COVID-19 was compared to the Spanish flu, which killed approximately 50 million people in 1918. As of June 25th, total deaths worldwide from COVID-19 had reached 494,000. Not tens of millions, and even this number is questionable. This time Ferguson was off not by thousands or hundreds of thousands, but by millions. And the average age at death was 80, and almost all who died having trouble, having multiple comodalities. The virus has had little effect on young and healthy people. I've got a lot of this information from Pam Popper and Dr. Russell Baylock. He's a neurosurgeon. The reality...
Thank you, ma'am. I apologize, but if you could wrap it up in just a few seconds.
Okay, the reality is that most of the cases have been diagnosed because more people are showing up for healthcare services because they weren't allowed to. I've been to all the hospitals over the county, and there have been empty, empty parking lots because people have put off getting help, and now they're getting tested.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right, next, we have Susie Schrak from Cocoa.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
First, I'd like to say that I am a caretaker for my 90 and a half-year dad. He's been living with me for almost two years now. He doesn't want to wear a mask, and we've, he's voluntary, he's in his perfectly right mind. He almost came today, but at 90 and a half, I, you know, didn't, you know, it was all right for him to stay home. He has, yeah. I just, I am here to respectfully ask that you do not mandate the wearing of masks here in our county. Personally, it makes me feel ill to breathe, rebreathe my own carbon dioxide through a mask. Now, I've observed many folks repeatedly repositioning their masks, which I actually saw you do here today over the screen, and, which is transferring germs between their mask and their hands. I respect all those who choose to wear a mask, but I ask that I'm allowed the freedom to not wear one. And my dad, who has gone to Publix and Aldi with me, and he doesn't want to wear a mask, and, you know, I don't want to have to put a mask, so then I can't take him to the grocery store anymore? So I just respectfully ask that you protect our freedoms to be able to freely breathe and be able to go get our groceries without wearing a mask. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, we have Ashley Moore, also from Cocoa.
Hi, Commissioner.
Welcome.
Thanks. I would just like to start off by saying that I'm a military wife. My husband just retired last year from serving 20 years in the Navy, and we've lived all over this world, and we've chosen Brevard County, Florida, to be our forever-ish home. And I just want to say that we love living here. We really love the county, it's beautiful, and the freedom that it offers. We have three beautiful daughters, and the middle, our middle daughter has sensory processing disorder, and she struggles with material and things. So having to hurry, I don't know what the policy is for children, but just even imagine her trying to put on a mask or wear a mask is absolutely absurd. And I know I was reading under the age of two or three is when, she's well beyond age two and three. But also, recently at the grocery store, I feel that we were personally harassed for not wearing. Now, the store does not mandate masks, but we were personally harassed by other customers that we, why we weren't wearing masks. And the dirty looks and the feelings that I get, I shouldn't have to tell everyone that my daughter has a condition that I don't have a medical note for. She just, she doesn't do well with senses, and her senses are heightened, and I know a lot of kids like this. And there's a lot of people that have many different medical things that they don't want to share, and I don't think they should have to. But I know that personally, wearing a mask feels very restrictive, and I feel lightheaded after I wear it for a long time, so I don't want to be out and about wearing it. And if a store wants to mandate that, I will support that by not going to that store. And I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And just by way of information, because I think you mentioned something that may be a question for other folks as well. What I'm proposing, there certainly would be an exception built in, so if someone has a diagnosed medical issue, whatever that might be, that precludes them from wearing masks, you know, I would not seek to impose that on someone that would have an issue medically as a result of it. So, you know, your daughter, for instance, is not someone I would contemplate having to wear one. Just, I just wanted to put that out there for you and for whoever else may wonder.
Not helpful.
All right, next up, we have Daniel Shea, or Shia, from Melbourne.
Hello, thank you, commissioners. I really wasn't coming planning to speak today, but then I think the point from the previous speaker was that we don't feel the need to have to explain our medical conditions or give our personal history to anybody. And, but besides that, there was a lot of more eloquent people than I today that spoke against having mandatory mask policy. And I would just like to bring up something that people really haven't mentioned today yet, and that's that, you know, we're panicking over this coronavirus and COVID-19 or whatever, but what we're not seeing is there's over 30 million cases of the flu this year, and there's a 45% effective rate. That's with the vaccine. That's 45% effective. And we're still way, we're not even close to that with coronavirus, and we're panicking, and we're trying to enforce these things on people and take their liberties away and make them reveal things that maybe they don't want to reveal, the medical conditions as previously stated. And I would just ask the commissioners to consider our personal choice. Again, I have no issue with people that want to wear a mask. That's their personal choice. I feel like I'm intelligent enough to take care of myself and my children and my family, and that I want to put my faith in my God-given immune system and what my grandmother told me for years, to wash your hands, don't touch your face, you know, cough into your elbow or sneeze, or, and I'm afraid that people are getting so comfortable with masks now that they quit doing all those things. They put this faith in the mask that they're just going to be protected, which we've, it's proven is not the case. So I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next, we have from Titusville, John Dako, or Daklik? It looks like a D-A, maybe a K and an I-S-C, or a D-A-L-I-C?
It's Dako.
Dako, I apologize. D-A-K-O from Titusville. All right, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. How you doing, county commissioners? Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I am a licensed healthcare provider, and I'm currently employed as a frontline worker. Fundamentally, I'm against wearing masks, but if it's going to stop the spread of the virus, then I'm... then I'm for this mandate. We're seeing more and more of our health, our frontline providers becoming infected with this virus. And becoming infected with this virus is doing a couple of different things. Number one, it's causing us to be quarantined for two weeks. Not only are we being quarantined for the two weeks, we also have to come, provide two negative tests before we can come back to work. Being a valuable commodity to the county, this puts, puts the county at risk of losing their healthcare providers or not having enough of them on the front line. The second thing that it does is it keeps me away from my family. My family is more important than work, and putting them through the quarantine and not being able to see them is, is something that I don't want to put them through. So I trust that you'll do your due diligence and that you'll look through the numbers and you'll look through the statistics, and you'll do what's right for us in Brevard County. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up we have David, oh gosh, this is a Titusville one. I'm going to, I'm going to lean on you, Commissioner Pritchett, to help me. Wen Glijkowski? I'm just going to say it real quickly, and then hopefully I'll get away with it. All right, from Titusville. Welcome, sir. All right, I'm going to try spelling it, hopefully that'll help. It looks like a W-E-N-G-L-I-K-O-W-S-K-I. First name David. Going once, going twice, going three times. Okay, I'll put that to the side. If he shows up later, we'll, we'll take him if we, if we're able. All right, next up from Titusville, Denise Gable. Going once Denise Gable, going twice Denise Gable. Oh, there you are.
Sir, I was in the back.
No, it's okay. All right, you've got the floor, ma'am.
Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to the citizens of Brevard. I've lived here for 13 years, and I love this county. I want to see it thrive, so I'm here to ask that you vote against the mask mandate. I'm not against people wearing masks, but I am against removing the right to choose. I'm concerned about why we are so focused on the infection rate if the death rate continues to drop. Are we at all concerned about how many new cases are among people who are wearing masks and practicing social distancing? Are we factoring in the unintended consequences from a mask mandate? We have never lived in a world without sickness or risks, and we didn't strip people of their personal freedoms in order to try to control the natural cycles of viruses. My health is not and has never been your responsibility. It's unreasonable to try to force that responsibility onto anyone. If we are willing to give up our liberties because we are afraid of a virus with a death rate that is plummeting despite a rising infection rate, we have to question whether we ever really believed in liberty at all. If our rights don't matter now, then when were they important? This is not the terrifying health crisis we are being told it is. Fear is what is actually hurting our community. It's time to stand up against the overreach and instead focus on promoting individual responsibilities and basic hygiene, which have been proven very effective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next from Cocoa, Angela Haseeb or Hasebi? Welcome, ma'am.
I live here in Brevard County with my husband and five children. I wanted to share with you my perspective on mask mandates. I have two conditions that would make it difficult for me to wear a mask. The combination of these conditions with a mask put me in a flight or flight response. I cannot think clearly with a mask on. Requiring masks would make it easier for others to publicly shame me or otherwise not allow me into a business to be able to take care of my family. I have seen the effect of public shaming and violent attacks on those who cannot wear masks. I implore you to make this a request and not a mandate. As I mentioned, I have five children and a husband who live with me. My children are all school age. I believe requiring them to wear masks will cause them anxiety. The children and adults need to see facial expressions to be able to learn about how to feel themselves. A kind smile goes a long way to help a child who needs reassuring. I know for me personally, the isolation I feel since the pandemic has brought on a level of depression and worry. The worry is not of the virus. The worry is that we are cut off from each other as a society, not able to even see a warm smile at the grocery store from a cashier or passerby. For some, wearing a mask creates social detachment, rapid heartbeat, rapid breathing, and fight or flight response. I understand wearing a mask will bring comfort to some, but as a society, I'm requesting freedom of choice regarding masks. Sometimes the decision should not be made by the majority, but rather to protect the minority who will be adversely affected by the mandates. Please vote no to mask mandates. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up we have Matt Nye from Melbourne. Welcome, sir. You've got the floor.
Good afternoon. Things may go faster if you tell people who's on deck, by the way.
Oh, okay, that's a good idea, sir. Let me, let me restart your time. Let me, let me actually, before you start, the next up will be Richard Richmond, then Mike Weiss, then Peter Carnesale, and then we'll, I'll announce some more after that. All right, you've got the floor, sir, and your time's restarted.
Thank you. So we are repeatedly told to trust the science and to follow the guidelines from the CDC and other authorities, but which of the guidance issued by these authorities should we follow? Do we follow the guidance issued back in February when Dr. Fauci said the general public didn't need masks at all? Or do we follow the guidance of the World Health Organization, who up until recently had the following statement posted in the mask Q and A on its website? Quote, "At the present time, the widespread use of masks everywhere is not supported by high-quality scientific evidence," close quote. Both have now reversed course, but none of the facts or physics specific to the virus or the masks have changed. The virus hasn't changed in size, and the physics of what masks do and don't block hasn't changed either. Evidence appears to show there is no discernible difference in the spread of the disease when you compare data from the four countries that didn't shut down or mandate social distancing with data from all of the other countries that did. The CDC has admitted to mixing active diagnostic testing data with antibody testing data, leading Dr. Birx to state in early May, quote, "There is nothing from the CDC I can trust," close quote. The CDC has also stated if you die with COVID, it was because of COVID. And as many doctors, coroners, and people with common sense have pointed out, that simply isn't true. The WHO promoted models claiming the mortality rate of COVID-19 was between 3.5 and 5%. The actual mortality rate appears to be closer to 1 or 1.5% and continues to decline as more testing is done. After all, if half of those that have the disease are asymptomatic, as we are told, that means the mortality rate is overstated by orders of magnitude. While many clamor to point out the alleged potential dangers posed by not wearing a mask, few seem to give any thought to the actual harm done by this fear-mongering and the foreclosure of businesses. There are very real health consequences to destroying businesses and people financially, substance abuse, child abuse, spouse abuse, hunger, anxiety, depression, suicides. All of these are on the rise as a direct result of government action in response to this virus. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. All right, next up, as I mentioned, is Richard Richmond from Melbourne.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank the Commission. It's a tough situation here in the county. I'm a business owner. I've been, as a matter of fact, this is the 25th year of my business in downtown Melbourne. I'm a 35-year resident. I'm a former adjunct faculty member at the Community College. And I'm here today to totally support masks. And I'm going to be quite clear why. I started following this on January 7th, when it first came out of Wuhan what the situation was with this particular virus. It was very clear to me that this was not the flu nor anything even close to the flu. I'm married to a woman from, that is native Taiwanese, and they have seen more serious flus and epidemics than we usually do here in the United States. Wearing a mask in many Asian countries is not an uncommon procedure, and they do it to ameliorate the condition of spreading the disease. These are N95 masks that I have. I bought mine on January 16th. They were about $1.98 at that time. The wholesale cost was about 70 cents when you bought them in quantities of a million or more. Now, due to the economic situation of demand, they're probably up around $2, $3 even when you buy them by the million. I would ask that it's going to have tremendous effect on the economy if we don't implement mask usage. Downtown Melbourne is empty, not because of any other reason than fear and lack of confidence. If we don't get quality masks into the hands of the citizens, this disease is going to be with us for many years. This is not a situation where vaccine's coming anytime soon. I can assure you, it's not. Everything I've studied says it's not. We need to get ahead of this situation now, or the economic impact will be devastating. As of yesterday...
Sir, I apologize. If you could sum it up in just three seconds.
As of yesterday, 48% of Americans do not have jobs, are not employed. That's not just those that are, that are, these are people that are unemployed for many reasons. But 48%, that means we're going to be in an economic situation here that's untenable.
Sir, I've got to stop you. I apologize, sir, I've got to stop you. All right, next up we have Mike Weiss from Rockledge. Welcome, sir.
Hello, thank you. Just to qualify, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a lawyer, I don't watch Doogie Howser, I've never seen an episode of Law and Order. I hope I'm still qualified to speak today. I do, however, have an MBA. I consider myself to be at least reasonably intelligent. I remember the press conference when Dr. Fauci said that we were going to have millions of people dying in the parking lots of hospitals that were overcrowded, and they would be gasping for air because we didn't have enough ventilators. That was the information we were going on when we shut this country down. The gentleman before me says, "If we don't use masks, we're going to have tremendous economic impact." And I would put to you that we shut the world down. It took 30 days, and the damage is done, okay? My wife is losing her job tomorrow because of COVID. We have far bigger problems in this country than making everybody wear a mask. Everybody's talking about the science, or the lack thereof. If you want me to wear a mask to make somebody else feel good or to instill confidence, or because something might happen, I'm sorry, the government lost my vote on that when they scared the living crap out of me and my family, saying that we were all going to die from this thing. People aren't dying, the mortality rates are going down. This is the CDC, this is not me, I'm not a doctor. But as we do more testing, we found out that we did flatten the curve. That was the point, right? We don't want to overcrowd the hospitals. We didn't overcrowd the hospitals. Now the curve has flattened, let's get people out there. Let's get the people out there so our natural immunity can take over. We never said we're going to keep people from getting the virus. We never said we were going to eliminate the virus. We were trying to flatten the curve of the virus. Hospitals are empty, okay? You don't need to do this. If we live in New York City or some other place where the hospitals are overrun, maybe we're in Brevard County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, Peter Carnesale from Melbourne. Commissioner Smith, this gentleman's name seems very familiar. It's tough to see him smiling behind this thing.
How you doing?
Welcome, sir. You've got the floor.
Okay. First, let me introduce myself. Firstly, I am a retired military person. I was an officer within the Army, and my expertise was in emergency management. And basically, I was the senior logistician during, during 911 at Ground Zero. So I have a, kind of a good idea of what happens when we inhale things that we should not. It has, it has been highly publicized that the Brevard Board of Commissioners would be looking at the possibility of requiring face masks to be worn by the people as they are in public environment and cannot social distance properly. If I understand that properly, that would mean that everyone would be required to wear a face covering at all times when in stores, restaurants, when not actually seated or eating, and all supermarkets, et cetera. This would include all employees of those establishments as well. You might remember that I wrote to all of the board members via an email back on May 3rd and voiced my opinion on the opening of restrictions too soon. I believe that the, due to the fears, not so much due to the spread, but due to the fears incurred by those that have some kind of other thing wrong with them, that basically we should require the masks. It has absolutely nothing to do with the protection of the individual wearing it. It has to do with the protection of the people that are in contact with the people wearing it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate you coming out. All right, next up from Satellite Beach, it's Eva Scilla, S-C-I-L-L-I-A.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you.
Ma'am, could you speak up just a little bit? I'm going to restart your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, thank you for giving me this opportunity to address you. My name is Eva Shalia. Two years ago, my husband, two children, and mom moved to Satellite Beach from New Jersey. My mom's name is also Eva, she's 73. She was diagnosed with multiple sclerosis 30 years ago, and ever since my dad died, I have been her primary caretaker. Every single day, I fear I will catch COVID-19 from someone who is likely not showing symptoms, and there will be no one to feed, change, bathe, or even listen to a game show with my mom. More than that scenario, I feel one of us will unknowingly bring home COVID-19 and kill my mom. I have avoided public places, I've made contingency plans, I've gotten weekly tests myself, but this isn't enough to prevent the spread. And the idea of unknowingly contracting COVID-19 and killing my own mom is now an unacceptable reality. I know my mom is an extreme case, but we all know and probably love someone that's compromised by age, illness, or something unknown and unseen. Many people don't want to wear masks or face coverings, and you don't want to force them. I know face coverings are itchy, sometimes it's annoying to wear them in the heat, and they fog up your glasses. I know they cost money, 38 cents on Amazon as of yesterday. My mom's life is worth more than an itchy nose, a hot face, and 38 cents. The lives of the people in our community are worth more than the mild inconvenience of lightly covering your mouth and nose while you shop. I would do anything to avoid spreading COVID-19 to someone else, and I hope in this community would be willing to accept a mild inconvenience to avoid this too. It is up to you, our leadership, to mandate masks in public places that could reduce the spread of COVID-19 and save lives. I recently heard a quote that made sense in this context. The greatest leader is not necessarily the one who does the greatest things, he is the one that gets the people to do the greatest things. We need you, our leaders, to lead and get the community behind the idea of accepting a mild inconvenience for sake of others. This would be the greatest thing you could do for use of your position right now, and for the greatest thing we could do for each other right now while keeping our economy operating and preventing people from losing jobs.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
All right, next up we have Bob White from the city of Melbourne. Welcome, sir.
Well, good afternoon wherever you may be. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what it is I'm more offended by, the chairman's opening statement or the fact that the five of you are not sitting right here with the rest of us, where you ought to be. You know, I also find it offensive whenever someone tells me that they're just listening to the experts. Let me suggest to you that there have been experts on both sides of this issue from the very beginning. The experts that you're choosing to listen to, Mr. Chairman, are the experts that validate your fears and the experts that support your contention and your position that as a government official, you apparently think that you have authority over and the right to contradict the rights of the individual citizens. That also I find offensive. I was going to talk just really about the numbers and try to put some proper perspective on them, so let me just go through that. Brevard County tests to date, 42,468 positive cases, 1,631. That's a 3.8% positive. Florida's percent positive is twice that, it's 7.5%. Brevard deaths, 17, divided by the 1,631 positive cases, that's a mortality rate of just 1.04%. Florida deaths total, 3,505, divided by the 152,434 positive cases, are twice that percent at 2.3, and in Miami... And in Miami-Dade, the 953 cases divided by, their 953 deaths divided by their 33,700 cases is even more, it's even higher, 2.8%. On Sunday, Miami-Dade County accounted for more than 25% of the new cases that were being reported statewide. That's just one county, over a quarter of the percent. Of the 29 deaths that were reported on Sunday, 17 of them, or 58.6%, were from just two counties, Miami-Dade and Palm Beach. Let's compare Brevard County quickly to Miami-Dade.
Sir, you just have a few seconds.
I'll finish with this, I'll finish, I'll finish with this. Brevard County has 602,000 people, 1,631 deaths, excuse me, cases, and 17 deaths. Miami-Dade has 4.6 times the population, 2,744,880 people.
Sir, out of respect for everyone having the same amount of time...
20 times the cases, and 56 times...
Thank you. It's like watching something where the audio doesn't sync with the video. Thank you, sir. All right, next up, Courtney Barker, with the city of Satellite Beach. And Logan, thank you for being quick on that trigger finger. Actually, hang on a sec, could you, could you speak up a little bit, Ms. Barker?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I just wanted to convey what the city council of Satellite Beach did last night. They, they felt that our city was just too small to do a mask mandate, and it really needed to happen on a county level. But they also, you know, realized that it is a very difficult thing to do with enforcement and so on, and they wanted to provide you with some options, and I sent that to you as an email last night. Some of those options could be, um, you know, instead of a full-scale mandate, to ask business, to, you know, to send out a notice to businesses, asking them to require a mask on their own. Also, doing a public education campaign, and I understand your EOC is doing a kind of a campaign right now, which is, um, which is really good, in our opinion. Uh, also asking businesses to post on their doors their mask policies, so that members of the public, if they don't want to go into an area that has people without masks, they understand that, and they won't go into those businesses. Um, you know, so those are some of the options that we laid out in the email. And also, you know, you could limit the mask mandates to essential businesses for, you know, um, for everyone, like grocery stores and pharmacies. So those are some of the stepped options that the council wanted to convey those to you, understanding that, you know, a mask mandate is a very difficult thing to do. But we do feel that masks are important. It is, um, you know, we, we do agree with you, Commissioner Lober, that, you know, every medical professional that we've spoken to, um, do advise to wear a mask, so, um, so we do agree with that, that practice, and we will be educating our public as much as we can. But again, we understand the difficulty of a mandate itself, and so we wanted to provide you with some of those options. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, we have Martha Smith from Cocoa. Any relation, Commissioner Smith?
Nope.
No?
A lot of us out there. Hi, thank you for your time. Um, I had a quick question before, um, I have to say what I want to say. As far as, um, you said in response to the lady that her daughter had a sensory issue, and you wouldn't mandate masks on someone like her, well, what does that mean? Does that mean anybody that has these issues don't have to wear them? And are we going to be questioned? Are we going to be allowed to go to stores if we had that? Because, you know, if you have an issue, it's also, to me, I feel like that's an invasion of privacy, if you're going to get stopped and say, "Well, why aren't you wearing a mask?" Do you have an answer for that, or...
I do, but it would take up your time, and if you're okay with that, I'm happy to respond, but you'd lose the time.
Well, is there some other way I can find the answer later on, then?
If you'd like to speak with me after, certainly you're welcome to, just as you were before the meeting.
Okay, that sounds great. Um, well, I just, for me, it's, I just want to speak on a personal level. I did research, I read the articles, I saw both sides, and I ended up coming to the conclusion that I'm not going to wear a mask. I choose not to, my family chooses not to, um, and the bottom line is because it's my choice. Um, I've been there, done that, I grew up overseas, I lived in countries where it wasn't my choice. I wasn't allowed to go where I wanted to go, I wasn't allowed to wear what I wanted to wear, depending on where I wanted to go. And the difference for me now is that now I'm in America. Now I'm an American. My husband fought for these freedoms, and he fought for the right for me to make the choice. Whether you choose to wear a mask, that's great, I have no problem with that, just like you should not have a problem with me choosing not to. Whether it's me, whether it's my family, like I said, my husband fought for these rights, I choose to stand and have a voice and fight with him, and because of that, I'm going to ask you not to make a mandate for masks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, we have Debbie Rich from Melbourne.
Good afternoon. Thanks for letting us be here. I was very disappointed that the Commissioners are not in the same room with us as well. Up front, I want to say that I do not wear a mask out in public. When I'm required to, I do wear a mask, I carry my mask, and of course, it has a hat on it. When I go to get my blood work done every two weeks at Quest, I'm required to wear a mask, so I wear a mask. When I go to see my doctor in Clearwater, I am not required to wear a mask in his facility. I go to my vet, I'm not required to wear a mask there. I do not think you should mandate masks, it should be up to the individual and the business owners. I am a small business owner here. I sell a lot of sniper hospital-grade disinfectant right now, because it does kill the COVID virus, and I'm selling it across the country. If people would disinfect their facilities, whether it's their personal vehicle, their homes, their businesses, I think we would be in a better situation all around. And I also think that if people would look at their vitamin D levels and their own immunity systems, that we would do better. Scotland, several countries overseas are very adamant about people taking vitamin D supplements every day. My immune system is great. I'm succeeding at the fight of cancer because of my immune system. I don't think that we need them mandated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, from the city of Satellite Beach, we have Patricia Love. Now, I know I pronounced that one right. Oh, here we go. Welcome, ma'am.
Uh, hi. I just want to say that I am opposed to wearing the mask. I do have, uh, some breathing issues. It makes me feel claustrophobic. I do not go anywhere where I have to wear a mask, and I feel like, I'm 79 years old, I'm in my twilight years, I should not, um, have to be a prisoner. See, I'm having a little trouble breathing. I should not have to be a prisoner in my house. So a lot of, I had a prepared comments, but I knew I wouldn't have time to get through them, and a lot of things have already been said. So, I will just end my comments by cutting to the chase. We have all been led down the primrose path by the CDC. The CDC is basically funded by all these major liberal donors, the Gates, Soros, Warren Buffett. So I think they have an agenda. It's to take down Donald Trump. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. All right, next up, from the city of Palm Bay, we have Sheri Hotten, H-O-T-T-O-N.
Hello, good afternoon. I am here to remind you all who are not here up in front of us, which you should be, obviously you're afraid to address us, that you all work for us. We elected you into office. We didn't elect you to take away our civil liberties. All of us have our own civil liberties, God-given protective rights, and you have no authority whatsoever to implement any kind of mandate on me. I am an individual, my body, my rights. You keep that in mind, because all of you guys vote on this mandatory, and you make it happen. Oh, boy. Oh, boy, that's all I can say. Thank you for my...
Thank you, madam. All right, next up, from city of Palm Bay, Mary Starr, with two Rs. Yeah, let me, let me do this, before Mary starts, just to give you the next several that are on the lineup here. After Mary, we'll have David Newman from Melbourne, Pam Derschka from Titusville, Kim Orbeck from West Melbourne, Mary Hayes from Palm Bay, Carolyn Wulas from Cocoa Beach, and I think that's good for the time being. All right, so up now, we have Mary Starr from Palm Bay. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. I just want to say, I think, first of all, what you guys are doing is called a plandemic, it's scamdemic. Uh, nobody should have to wear a mask. Is our body our choice? That's all I can say to you.
Thank you, madam. All right, next up, we have David Newman, Melbourne. I like the shirt, sir, welcome.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. I, first of all, want to thank you all for allowing us to speak here, and hopefully listening to us, as our concerns are very important here. I would like to speak to you, uh, I've been elected before as a policymaker, I understand the position that you all are in, and I know that you want to help us out, and so hopefully, by listening to everybody here, you will be able to do that. As you may know, Governor DeSantis actually called our community a leader on this issue, which is fantastic. I think those are things that you have done, as well as things that we have done on our level. Brevard residents are strong, they are smart, and they can be trusted. And I believe that this really comes down to an issue of trust. Uh, we've had over 500 engagements on some posts that I've put together, and on those posts, time after time after time, the residents are asking, "Just let us do what we can do." They're going to wear masks when they feel it's appropriate, they're going to not when they're in the safety of their own homes, maybe in a park, and other places like that. They just want to be trusted by our government. And I assure you that the people here, I'm, don't think that we need to have a mask mandate, and I believe that all the people around me here, the people outside, they would actually be more than happy to help you find other ways for us to help our community when it comes to this. They will help sanitize parks, they will help sanitize seats, they will do whatever it takes so that we can keep those liberties, but while at the same time, having our freedom to make that choice. Outside of that, I would just recommend that you empower us, as opposed to making a mandate. You can support those who are for face masks, they're wonderful businesses. Downtown Melbourne, they have a sign, "Hey, can you wear a face mask when you come in?" You guys can help provide those masks for individuals, or something else, through that CARES funding that you have. If you might be able to support those who are against the masks, again, give us some opportunities, give us some education on ways that we could get out in the community and do what you're looking for us to do, we are happy to do that as well. Again, this is a matter of trust, uh, please trust us. We are here to make Melbourne a great place. We want to continue to lead on this issue, and we hope that you will allow us to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Well timed. Pam Derschka from Titusville.
Hello there.
Welcome, madam.
I'm a volunteer with Mutual Aid Brevard, and in that role, I often get groceries for those in need that can't wait for a grocery delivery or a pickup. I always wear a mask, but I see the majority do not. The mask I wear can protect me a little, but it's primarily for those around me. This weekend, I heard a story on NPR. It was about, uh, clusters that had popped up in the state of Washington, and the director of health there, Erica Luttenbach, said contract tracing there led back to a party of 100 or 150 people in early June. They had 14 cases, and another 15 were associated with it. Then she was asked about protests and rallies. She said, "We did have a rally in Bellingham, which is our, our county seat, and there was also a protest, and we have not been able to connect a single case to that rally or to the protest, and what we're finding is, it's large part is due to the use of masks." Almost everyone at the rally was wearing a mask, and it's really a testament to how effective masks are in the prevention of the spread of this disease. This weekend, on the morning Sunday shows, uh, former FDA Scott Gottlieb, in the Trump administration, and a Republican, said, "Hopefully attitudes around simple but impactful interventions like mask-wearing and general social distancing are starting to make a change." And he was referring to Texas. And then I will close with this, Senate Leader Mitch McConnell said, "We must have no stigma, none, about wearing masks when we leave our homes and come near other people. Wearing simple face coverings is not about protecting ourselves, it's about protecting everyone we encounter." And the, the rate in this area has gone up, and we need to bring it back down.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Kim Orbeck from West Melbourne. Welcome, ma'am.
Hello. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am, you've got the floor.
Um, thank you very much for allowing us to speak. I'm a retired registered nurse. Uh, my opinion is based on working in the medical field for 35-plus years, listening to experts in the, in the field, and more importantly, just a little common sense. My daddy always said I had lots of that. When the national emergency was declared in March, my husband and I took it very seriously. Um, I think that some of the other people we knew might thought we were a little bit crazy, but we believed that if they don't live with you, that you need to practice social distancing and masking. It doesn't matter if it's your grandchild. I love to hug and kiss my grandchild right now, but I can't do that. Some people argue that they don't want a mask mandate, because government shouldn't have that much control, and we've heard that a lot today. And all I can think about is that, seat belts, that's a mandated control, you're only saving yourself, so why is everyone so against wearing a mask to protect other people? We should all be able to go out in public and feel protected. I've listened to the news, and know that at least one of you don't agree with the mask mandate, and we'll never all agree on the subject, but I have to ask, are we going to protect the residents of Brevard County, or wait until we have numbers like our next-door neighbor, Orange County, before we take action? Too many people are not adhering to social distancing and mask guidelines issued by the CDC. These people are infecting, or worse, killing people they care about, as well as strangers. I believe a mandate would not only be positive to keep our residents safe, but also good for our economy. I would go out to more stores if people were wearing masks, and I'm sure others would too. So I implore you to make the right decision for Brevard and adopt the mandatory mask policy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, the next several that we have, just to, to get ready to be on deck here. Next up, we'll have Mary Hayes from Palm Bay, then Carolyn Wulas from Cocoa Beach, then Adrian Anderson from Melbourne, and Stephanie Anderson from Indian Harbor Beach, and then Hannah Lovell Tombleedies from Cocoa. So let's have Mary Hayes come up first, if we may.
Hello. Respect the Gators, go Gators. I'm just here to say that, um, I follow, I'm following my sister, so I'm also a registered nurse, and over the weekend, I asked my grandchildren, ages 13 and 11, to draw me a picture of what they would feel like is going on right now, from their perspective. And I was told, to be a superhero, you don't wear a cape, you wear a mask. Because when you're out in public, you can only control what you do. I can't control what you do. But if you respect each other, then you will take time to put a mask on, just to cover up. In our, um, military system, the highest honor you can get is to be awarded a Purple Heart, and that is being given because you risk your life in order to save someone else's. We're not asking for you to risk your life to save someone else, we're simply asking you to be considerate of others and their space, and their right to be in the store, in the pharmacy, wherever, and cover your face and your mask, your mouth, if you can, if you physically can. If you can't do it, there, there... If you can't do it, there are exceptions to every rule. And I just ask that, as we go through this, we know there's different opinions, but please, please consider the fact that if each person had decided to do it because it was the right thing to do, we wouldn't be needing to ask you to put a mandate up there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, we have Carolyn Wulas from Cocoa Beach.
Hi. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am. You've got the floor.
All right, thank you. I'm Carolyn Wulas from Cocoa Beach. I'm a city commissioner there. My views right now, we're having this discussion tonight at our emergency meeting, so these are my own personal views, not the views of the commission in Cocoa Beach as of yet. But I am against this mandatory mask requirement. As a city commissioner, I see this, it would be very difficult to enforce, and it's confusing. I can see the confusion that would happen in our residents and our visitors. And as a city commissioner, I really do not want to expend our police force's precious time and money on enforcing the face masks when we have to deal with the crime of violence due to other big issues that we're dealing with today in these uncertain times to maintain law and order. On another note, masks can cause several unhealthy side effects, such as dermatitis, change in skid pigmentation, itchy rashes, sores on the nose and behind the ears, hives, breathlessness. Some negative side effects of prolonged wearing of a face mask can vary from headaches to increased airway resistance, carbon dioxide accumulation, to hypoxia, all the way to life-threatening, serious complications. And actually, the N95 masks that are supposedly the most effective filters to this actually limit breathing to a greater degree, causing more headaches and health issues. And it's been shown that it can reduce blood oxygenation by 20%, which can lead to people passing out, passing out behind the wheel while they're driving, and can reduce natural immunity. And can also, wearing masks can also cause lung infections, especially in elderly people. And as a citizen on my own, I have asthma, I'm asthmatic, and I also have breathing issues, and this just, when I have to wear it for work, it really affects me. So I know you said you would put in provisions for these conditions, but I don't know how that's going to work. I have to go around explaining to people, "I have asthma, so I can't wear a mask." But I just want to say, just because other counties and states are doing this, doesn't mean we have to follow suit.
Ma'am, I apologize, but you're out of time. I do apologize.
Okay. Thank you. I'd just say, leave the choice up to the people themselves, and they're smart enough to figure it out.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, next up, from the city of Melbourne, we have Adrian Anderson.
Hello. Thank you. I have three small children and am a small business owner, so I have a vested interest in this particular county. I'm not a lawyer, a doctor, but I am working on a master's degree at Florida Tech. So I did find it also, as others have said, a bit insulting on some of the things you were saying earlier over the speaker, because I am literate enough to read medical journals, and I can comprehend them. So I think that, along with everything else everyone said, that kind of just fits in there. But I've collected data in regards to this topic exclusively from Florida Health, covid19.gov website, and the U.S. Census Bureau. So I think we can all agree on those numbers. But I pulled these earlier today before I came, and the total cases tested and confirmed in Brevard County were 1,716, including non-residents. The population of Brevard, according to the Census Bureau, is 601,942 people. I did the math on that, and that makes the percentage of positive cases versus the population 0.285% as of Florida Health information on the government website today. It's very low, barely over a quarter of a percent. The total deaths in Brevard, as I think we can all agree, were 17. If you do the math on that, that's literally less than 1% deaths. Now, I don't want to trivialize the deaths by writing those off, because death can be very trying and sad and emotional, but I don't think we want to have our actions be out of emotion. We want to take our actions out of facts, and if you look at the facts and you look at the numbers, we are very low, and as other people have stated, we know masks don't work. And if the mask on my face is not working for me, it is not helping anybody else around me either. I can tell you that.
Ma'am, if you just want to sum up in a few seconds?
I'm against the mandate, and as a constituent, I hope that you realize, there will be ramifications if you put a mandate in place. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, we have Stephanie Anderson from Indian Harbor Beach.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Welcome, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. As everyone else has had to do, I'm going to kind of speed up here to get everything in. Quick question. Have you ever noticed sunlight as it filters through a window, and you see all the dust particles and things, and you're thinking, "Oh, I don't want to even breathe right now"? Well, that's what the air around us always looks like. We just can't see it. And when we're wearing a face mask, even though the, let's say, large drops might be covered, it is not stopping all of our breath from coming out, and our breath has particles in it. And if we have an illness, those particles are going to be there. It's going to come through the mask, it's going to go around the mask. Respiratory pathogens share similar transmission mechanisms, aerosol, droplet, and fomite. And as we know, now that we're in the 21st century, germs are microscopic. So when we're wearing a mask, a lot of times, that mask is like kind of keeping mosquitoes out with a fence. So in my opinion, masks are useless, whether you're wearing one for yourself or wearing one for someone else. I'm not a doctor, and I don't have to be a doctor to know how wrong all the doctors have been while they've been talking about this pandemic. I believe the fear has hurt people way more than this virus. Final thought. When people are wearing a mask, they're touching their face. Now, will it give them COVID? Only if they've been in contact with COVID. However, we all know that touching our face is the worst way to make us sick. So if you're going to ask me to wear a mask for other people, what about me touching my mask? Which doctors, they have training of how to put a mask on, how to take a mask off. There's this, all this protocol with wearing face masks, and they have that so that you're not contaminating yourself.
Ma'am, I apologize, but you're out of time.
Okay, basically, don't make me sick by making me wear a mask. Maybe it won't be COVID, maybe it'll be a flu, maybe it'll be something worse. But forcing people to wear a mask and touching their face all the time, and wearing something that's wet and yucky, is going to make people sick. And who is going to be responsible for that?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming out. All right, next up, let me give you the next few that we have. Next up, we'll have Hannah Lovell Tombleedies from Cocoa, then Josh Fields from Palm Bay, Anita Unrith from Melbourne, Linda Fisher from Melbourne, Bill Jones from Cocoa, and we'll go from there. So next up, Hannah Lovell Tombleedies from Cocoa.
She's not here.
Okay, going once, Hannah? Going twice?
She's not here.
All right, I'll put her off to the side. I know we have one other. I'll call the two that didn't respond at the end, and if we have them, great, and if not, we've tried. All right, next up then is Josh Fields from Palm Bay. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Could you speak up just a little bit, sir?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, good. Okay. Good afternoon. I'm here as a member of and on behalf of the Libertarian Party of Brevard County. I stand in opposition to this motion to compel the use of face masks. To be clear, our opposition to the mandate does not imply that personal protective equipment is ineffective, for this virus does not warrant a measure of precaution. And I said PPE instead of mask, because this also has ocular transmission. I personally choose to wear a mask on my own accord, as do many citizens of Brevard. I understand that people on all sides of this debate can have good-faith objections. I do not think anyone here lacks empathy or compassion for their fellow citizens. The question becomes, what role do we ask the government to take in this pandemic? Many states and counties have decided to compel citizens to wear masks with an array of civil and criminal penalties. These places are also being challenged in court, as the grounds of these measures are unconstitutional. I am certain that if this ordinance passes, this commission will be engaged in a legal battle. Commissioners, you have been elected to your respective positions with the primary role of safeguarding the Constitution, upon which an oath all of you took. It is important to consider that many of us view the acceptable role of government to include the prohibition of actions that are harmful to others. We do not view that the government as an entity can compel action. This is an important distinction. Just because an action may seem reasonable or supported by the majority does not make that action just. I believe people should attempt to wear personal protective equipment. However, I do not believe it ever should be at the capacity of the state to compel these actions. However, the Libertarian Party respects private entities and businesses to be able to exercise their rights and set their own standards of mission onto their property. As a citizen, visiting these places is a voluntary choice. To compel others to act on your behalf is not a community, it is a prison, and the state becomes your warden. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was well timed. All right, next up, we have Anita Unrith from Melbourne. Welcome, ma'am.
Hello.
If you could speak up pretty substantially, I'd certainly appreciate it. It's tough to hear you over here.
Yes, sorry. I have all my stuff here because you're making us leave after we speak.
Uh-oh. Well, you've got the floor, ma'am.
Anita Unrith from Melbourne. I would like to say that I applaud Mr. Abate for the county policy that the county staff has to wear a mask. That makes just good sense. I would like to tell the few people that are left, and you commissioners, that I had COVID-19. I haven't heard anybody else here today say it. My husband had it after me, and he had a much worse case. He was sick for two and a half weeks, I was only sick for one week. COVID-19 is not the flu. It is not like anything I've ever had before, and it is a serious illness. I hope this event today will not be a super-spreader event, because half the people in this room are not wearing masks. My husband says he wears a mask because he wants to be a leader. He's a retired Air Force chaplain, active duty for 22 years, and in Brevard County, got in the Air Force, sent us here in 2002, and this is our forever home. We love Brevard County. How come in Seminole County, Orange, Hillsborough, Pinellas, and the city of Jacksonville, those leaders have required masks? And I heard a couple of people threatening you today. I think that's horrible, because I don't think they should be threatening you if you choose to do the right thing and require people to wear masks in public places in Brevard. My husband and I went for a ride the other day, and we went to the National Merritt Island Refuge, and we saw all kinds of people on the causeway, not at all social distancing with no masks. That's on the Merritt Island. You are the leaders, and you need to make the decisions. I was a teacher for 30 years, and I made decisions in my classroom.
Ma'am, if you could just sum up?
I really would appreciate it if you would have a mask policy for the safety of all in Brevard, because I don't want anybody to have to go through this disease. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Linda Fisher from Melbourne, and then after that, we'll have Bill Jones from Cocoa. All right, calling Linda Fisher once, twice? Third time? Okay, I'll put her off to the side then. So just for everyone's benefit that's out there, the next several we'll have are Bill Jones from Cocoa, then we'll have Kimberly King from Indy Atlantic, then Krishna Tawadia from Merritt Island, then Jacob Gentlemen from Melbourne, and I'll give you all some more names after that. So Bill Jones from Cocoa, if we could have you come up, sir? Okay, I guess we don't have Bill, unfortunately. All right, how about Kimberly King from Indy Atlantic? All right, I see movement. That's a productive sign here. That's good. Welcome, ma'am.
Hi, thank you for your time.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Is that better?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. So so many people have made great points about the masks violating our civil rights, and I totally agree with that. I'm completely against this whole mask thing. We've gone through how ineffective they are. Also, people that don't want to go outside and take any risk, they really don't have to. It's so easy to get absolutely everything delivered to your home. People need to take responsibility for themselves, not ask other people to limit their lives for them. I think the biggest thing that we haven't addressed, or it's come up a little bit, but is fear. This whole COVID-19 has been fear-driven from the very beginning. We talk about numbers that have been so over-inflated, we do know that the death rate is really maybe 1%, even with its inflation. But the fear in and of itself is the biggest problem. We have kids not going to school. 75 million kids not going to school because they're afraid. We have businesses that can't open. The effect of that is increased domestic abuse, attempted suicide, and drug overdoses. I have friends that work in the ER. The ER goes hours without anybody coming in. I have people that I know that drive ambulances. The calls are not for COVID. They are for the domestic abuse, attempted suicide, and drug overdose. That's due to depression. That's due to having no thought about what you're ever going to have in the future, as we remain shut down, because people choose fear. Fear, false evidence appearing real. COVID-19 does not have the statistics to shut anything down or to demand masks. It's just an infringement on our rights. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, we have got Krishna Tawadia. I think that was Kimberly King, right? Sound right? Okay, I'm getting the yes. All right, so next up, we have Krishna Tawadia from Merritt Island.
Hello. So before we start quickly, can you hear me?
Sir, I've got to run the time the same for everyone, so I'm going to give you the floor, though. Yes, sir.
You can hear me. All right. So I'm here today to talk about why I believe that we should mandate masks. First of all, we have to talk about what our liberty is. Personally, I see that our liberty as Americans is the ability to exercise our rights to do things. Now, first of all, we can't do that if we're dead, and second of all, we can't do that if the economy isn't a standstill. We must remember that in order to have individual freedoms, everyone has to keep everybody else safe. So for example, we are not losing our liberty, and we are not losing our liberty when we ask people to wear masks, because if you think about it, there are times in American history where we have lost our liberty. During the Civil War, President Lincoln suspended habeas corpus. During World War II, we had war rationing, and yet those accentuated our freedoms later on. Fighting those battles is the reason why I can enjoy those freedoms here today. Now, we should also talk about why the masks work. Now, masks don't work to protect us as individuals, they protect other people if we have it. The main risk of COVID-19 is that if you are carrying it and you don't have symptoms, you can still spread it to someone else, and that is the main purpose of the mask. The reason that we legislate DUIs is because, one, well, you should not be a harm to yourself, it's more important that you're not a harm to others. We must remember that in order to have individual freedoms, everyone has to keep everybody else safe. So for example, we are not losing our liberty when we ask people to wear masks, because if you think about it, there are times in American history where we have lost our liberty. During the Civil War, President Lincoln suspended habeas corpus. During World War II, we had war rationing, yet those accentuated our freedoms later on. Fighting those battles is the reason why I can enjoy those freedoms here today. Now, we should also talk about why the masks work. Now, masks don't work to protect us as individuals. They protect other people if we have it. The main risk of COVID-19 is that if you are carrying it and you don't have symptoms, you can still spread it to someone else, and that is the main purpose of the mask. The reason that we legislate DUIs is because, one, well, you should not be a harm to yourself. It's more important that you're not a harm to others. Us as Americans have a responsibility to each other, and especially because if we die, we don't have freedoms anyway. If the economy goes into a standstill, if it goes to a halt, none of these people would be able to come out here. Finally, talking about our freedoms, there's no way that this could be a slippery slope. What's going to happen if we wear masks? Nothing. Nothing's going to happen if we have to wear a mask. That's a simple freedom. If the Brevard County Commission of the Government was actually trying to do something, of course, we'd be here to fight it if there was actual tyranny. But here, I stand in firm affirmation with you, Commissioner Loeb, because I agree that for the safety and liberty of our people, we must mandate wearing masks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have Jacob Gelman. Then after Jacob from Melbourne, we'll have Dwight Siegler from East Memes, then Sanjay Patel from Satellite Beach, followed by Angela Perdue from Cocoa. All right, let's have Jacob come up. Welcome, sir.
The conversation today surrounding a governmental intervention to regulate mask-wearing in public comes down to one key consideration: the function of the state. This consideration most often leveraged as an argument of values. You ask, "How could we regulate agents of free will? We mustn't allow ourselves to become sheep", the underlying premise being the tenets of a libertarian framework for governance. This framework argues that the role of government is the protection of liberties. And in this protection of states, only justification for existence is the implementation of my own rights. If this is to be true, then one may ask, "How can a government require me to wear a mask?" These are some of the most common arguments against your own implementation of regulation. However, Kant, the creator of libertarian thinking, also argued that the bright line for such considerations of creating law is in preventing someone else's action that may impede on my own ability to act as a free agent. So we see, even in one of the most conservative interpretations of governance, there still exists the moral imperative of the state to act when conditions allow for it. All evidence points to an increased risk for me if I walk into a room full of those without a mask. Even if I had chosen to reduce my chances of infection, the actions of those around me may further compromise the state of my own health. Texas A&amp;M University found that over the course of a month, mask-wearing in Italy saved 78,000 lives and 66,000 in New York City. This is about more than an individualistic interpretation of acting morally. This is about a collective push to protect the rights of those around us. And because of this, any argument about the overreach of government becomes mute, because someone else wearing a mask might actually impede on my own rights. Are seatbelts an overreach or drunk-driving laws? Did public indecency laws lead to a dystopian state of government? The answer to all of these: no. Without any type of regulation for face masks, you are reopening the economy and forcing those who cannot afford to miss work to risk their lives because of your idea of individual responsibility is flawed and ineffective. You support an ableist society which deems disabled lives as disposable for the freedom of those who find a violent use for their own privilege as some standard for living. For a commission built up of people who supposedly fight against political correctness, voting against this is the most politically correct thing you could do. You are all intelligent enough to know the fallacies of your own arguments, yet will surely vote against this because you fear an upcoming election while there are people fearing for their lives. Grow up. You all asked to be leaders. Now act like one. Do what is best for this country, not what's best for your upcoming election cycle.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have Dwight Siegler from East Memes. And thank you, everyone, for your patience. I apologize for the wait with us. We've just had so many speakers. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for having this meeting, but it's kind of odd when you can't see who you're talking to. I'd like to look at my county commissioner opponent in the face. I'd like to shoot from the hip. And it seems like this meeting is all one-sided. It sounds like it's Commissioner Loeb is the only one that's wanting this mandatory mask requirement. We can't see or hear the other commissioners. This is real strange. It seems like you're afraid to face the people. Instead of trying to mandatory a mask requirement, what happens then when we have this next big holiday, the Fourth of July, and all the surrounding counties have shut down their beaches, and everybody comes to Brevard County because you're afraid to make a decision to shut down the beaches? Make the right decisions. If you want to be the commissioners, then lead somebody, lead and stop following DeSantis.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Sanjay Patel from Satellite Beach, followed by Angela Perdue in Cocoa, followed by Daniel Williman in Satellite Beach. Afterward, we'll have Karen Mellon from Melbourne, and I'll give some more at that point. Mr. Patel, you have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I just want to assure the commission, hell has not frozen over. I am in agreement with Commissioner Loeb. I stand here in support of a mandatory mask order for Brevard County, for public health and safety reasons. A few days ago on Saturday, Florida had its highest daily number of coronavirus cases with 9,585 cases. The very next day, we had another 8,530. In fact, Florida's COVID cases have gone up fivefold in just two weeks. On Sunday, June 21st, we had 850 cases in Brevard County. Today, we have 1,793, double in nine days. We gained 1,300 cases in one month. It's abundantly clear that Florida is having serious issues containing the spread of this virus. The CDC and the World Health Organization have made scientifically-based recommendations that include wearing face covers. Many countries and states that have successfully lowered their cases and flattened their curves have also used the same measures, which include requiring masks. The Florida Medical Association, which represents more than 25,000 physicians, has come out in favor of mandatory mask requirements. Dr. Ronald Gifler, the FMA president, said, "His group encourages local officials to adopt regulations requiring individuals to wear face coverings in public places." "The science is clear," Gifler added. "Asymptomatic infected individuals can release infectious aerosol particles while breathing and speaking. Not wearing a mask or face covering increases exposure, whereas universal masking greatly reduces the spread of viral particles." The message is clear: for the sake of your health and the health of everyone around you, Florida's doctors want you to wear a mask. We need our elected officials to listen to the medical experts and the scientists and mandate a mask order here in Brevard County to protect the health and safety of every resident in our community. Please do the right thing to protect the lives of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel, and I'll say it is kind of horrifying we do agree on something. Maybe in 18 months, we'll agree again. All right, Angela Perdue from Cocoa.
Hi, my name's Angela.
Welcome, ma'am. Thank you for your patience.
Hi, yeah. Okay, so I sent you guys an email yesterday, last night, and so I'm going to read that email, but also I've added some things in it today as well. "There are many reasons why this mandate is wrong and should not be put in place. Aside from the obvious privacy and constitutional issues, a mandate of this kind will segregate a large portion of the population. Those with anxiety, claustrophobia, those who are hard of hearing, and those who have issues speaking, among other things, are being told by this mandate that they are not as important as everyone else. The science on the issue of masks is all over the place and very undecided. Most people do not wear them correctly, nor do they wear the correct kind to prevent the spread of the disease. This mandate is almost impossible to uphold without breaking other laws. How do you plan on enforcing this? Why do we need to give our police department more to do when they are already criticized by the public at every turn? This would require people to carry papers with them, similar to Nazi Germany or like current-day England, where people have to carry papers with them. Our society needs to move on from this virus and the constant scare tactics of the media and the politicians that are hurting more than this virus ever will. I personally know many people who are suffering from depression, and I have friends who have lost loved ones to suicide as a result. Overnight, our jobs were taken away from us, and we were told that we were not essential, which is ironic, because we still have to pay bills and put food on the table. So I would argue my job is essential, if only to my husband and children. I would not allow my children to wear a mask. Enough has been asked of our children this year, and I will not be adding an extra restriction. Florida is a miserable place to be during the summer, and adding the extra layer of a mask is just asking for heat-related problems. We, the people only, should be voting on something that affects our lives personally, not county officials. There's a difference between freedoms and liberties, and tyranny doesn't always come in the front door announced. Yes, the world is watching, and those in communist countries are trying to warn us. We, as Americans, must continue to be a light of freedom throughout the world and a haven to those who are oppressed. I would ask you to please vote against this."
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, from the city of Satellite Beach, Daniel Williman. Welcome, sir.
Hey, good afternoon, Commissioner Loeb.
Sir, would you mind just speaking up just a touch? You're not as low as some other folks, but just a little bit, if you would.
How's this?
Oh, that's pretty good.
All right, excellent. I don't often agree with you, but I totally agree with you on this one. I just want to get that out of the way right now. I've heard a lot of fake news about how masks don't work. I don't want to be here, all right? I'm high-risk. You see, I'm wearing an N95 mask. I don't want to be here. There's a lot of people not wearing masks. And I'm a little scared to be here, but I've got stuff to say, all right? There's a lot of fake news going around about how masks don't work. Well, somebody forgot to tell Japan that, because they all wore their masks, and they nipped this thing in the bud like that. It's gone, all right? Our enemies are watching this right now, and I guarantee you, they're taking notes. They're thinking, "We don't have to. If we want to take America down, we don't have to invade. We don't have to have planes and bombs and all that. We just have to deploy a bioweapon." Because I guarantee you, half of the people will go to their graves, meandering around in public with no PPE, talking about their rights, while the other half goes to their graves, begging the first half to stop spreading it. I want to read to you an excerpt from a 1905 SCOTUS case, Jacobson v. Massachusetts. "The liberty secured by the Constitution of the United States does not import an absolute right in each person to be at all times and in all circumstances wholly freed from restraint, nor is it an element in such liberty that one person or a minority of persons residing in any community and enjoying the benefits of its local government should have power to dominate the majority when supported in their action by the authority of the state." We've been over all this before. Back in 1900s, when we had the Spanish Flu pandemic, we had a mask mandate. All these arguments, we've been over before. Now, it's time for you guys to sack up and do the right thing for Brevard County, or I guarantee you, we will remember each and every one of your names when it comes time to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, the last several speakers we have are Karen Mellon from Melbourne, Janice Gregory from Cocoa, Pam Seater, or Seaton, I apologize, from Merritt Island, and Jennifer Johnson from Palm Bay, in that order. So let's have Karen Mellon come up from Melbourne, please. Thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you for listening to me. My name's Karen Mellon, and I'm a private citizen. I was offended that you guys were not in the room with us. I was offended that if I wasn't willing to talk, that I would have to stand out in the lobby, listening to everybody talking and having conversations, trying to overhear them. I'm offended that you are in an isolated area with the committee, and I'm sure you're all socially distant from each other, but yet you choose to keep those masks on your face, so I can only hear maybe one out of four words that you've been saying, okay? That being said, the government has done a great job at scaring people to death about this COVID-19. It borderlines on fear-mongering. And I'm not saying it's just Brevard County. I'm saying the government, okay? I, as an American, and all of the other Americans that have the choice, has the right to decide what they're going to do with the information that they've received. And they're going to do whatever that is. I personally choose not to wear a mask. I don't see what going to the beach, smelling in the fresh salt water and the sunlight has to do with anything that's going to cause me to get Corona. I'm sure the coronavirus will not live in the salt water. I'm just very frustrated, and I am also very insulted when people try to fear-monger me or insult me in the store to my face, because I decided not to wear a mask. I did not sneeze on them. I did not cough on them. I did not touch them. I even used the right lanes to go up and down the stores, so that I'm not facing anybody. I just want this to be said. Thank you for listening, and have a great day.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so we'll have Janice Gregory from Cocoa, then Pam Seaton from Merritt Island, Jennifer Johnson from Palm Bay, and we do have one more that was added, Mary Smith from Cocoa.
I realize I'm kind of short here.
No, you're fine.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. And thank you for letting me speak. I realize that this has become a hot-topic issue and now has health outcome consequences, but it has unfortunately become a political issue. So let's take politics out of the issue. Let's talk economics. We all want our businesses to succeed. I want businesses to succeed. However, that's only going to happen if we can reduce the number of COVID-19 cases. That can only be done if people follow common sense rules and wear a mask in public, we trace contacts, and we do social distancing. Look at New York City and other countries and how they've reduced their cases. The status quo is not working. A mandate to wear a mask in public would not be necessary if people would do the sensible thing, but they're not. So therefore, unfortunately, a policy is required. We do want people, including older people like me, to feel comfortable in coming back to businesses. If I get COVID-19, I'm likely to die. And that may not matter to a lot of people, but it matters to me and to mine. I've heard them say that shopping is an option, and I kind of agree. But businesses can't survive by delivery alone. So we need to make people feel comfortable coming back to businesses, and that does require masks. I also find it interesting that the mic is being wiped down every time somebody comes up here without a mask, but yet it won't be wiped down, because I'm wearing a mask, and I find that telling. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. All right, next up, Pam Seaton from Merritt Island.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I really didn't intend to speak today. This is uncomfortable. I admit that it's uncomfortable. But I'm a retired nurse. I spent my life taking care of other people and looking out for them. If your surgeon walked into an operating room without this, you would freak out. You'd want to see this on your doctor's face. So it does protect. And I've lived my life knowing that masks do protect. They protect healthcare workers. They protect patients. So this is, I don't wear it for me. I wear it for you. I wear it for my neighbors and for everyone in this room who doesn't have the courtesy to wear one for me. So it's a matter of taking care of each other. So please, pass it. We need leadership. We have needed leadership ever since this started. So I'm looking to Brevard, to my commissioners, to provide the leadership that we all need to have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we have, next up, Jennifer Johnson from Palm Bay.
Well, she did wipe it down, just for the record. Thank you for listening, and I trust you are hearing what people are saying, because since you are in another room, which I am pointing out for those who are watching, it does seem you can't hear the applause going on. There is evidence on both sides. I think we can all agree that you can find both sides to any topic out there in our information-age society. All viruses die, and this virus has already become less deadly. Whereas the H1N1 virus, it ran its course, just as this virus will, and already has done. The spike isn't about death. During quarantine, we focused on death numbers. Now we are focusing on infected numbers. But even if we focus on the numbers, the flu shot has a very similar death rate, not to give you another reason to fear, but it's true. If you get the flu shot, you have a chance of dying from the flu shot. I also do not support masks, because this is very difficult on people who read lips or have an accent even, and we have heard from many about other conditions as well. Many have used seatbelts as an example, and I would like to point out that seatbelts do not protect other people, which is the argument they are using. Freedom is not about forcing people based on your opinions. I ask that you remember the people, because it is we, the people, that this government is founded on. Again, I hope you can hear the applause in here and outside, because it doesn't seem like you can hear some of that. I think this is one other problem with masks and distance. We are losing the personal and public camaraderie that makes America great. I hope you listen to all of these comments. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, we have Mary Smith from Cocoa. I'm going to call the few that didn't respond, but yes.
Hello.
Welcome, ma'am.
First of all, I'd like to say, "The Bible tells us our life is a vapor. It appears for a little time and then vanishes away. We're all appointed to die. We just don't know when." So most important question here is, "Do you know where you're going?" I'm a Brevard citizen, and I'm not against people wearing masks, but if they choose to or not. I completely agree with those before me who have opposed this. I have a neighbor who was tested positive with the COVID-19. was tested positive, positive with the COVID, who was an older gentleman, gentleman. He felt fine two days, and then later went back to be tested again and was tested negative. So how do we, as citizens, really know what is, what is right and what is, what is not? Please take into consideration our personal rights to choose if we would like to wear a mask or not. I ask you to vote no. I don't take lightly those who have lost their lives, but I think a lot of things are being blown out of proportion. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to go through the few folks that I called earlier that didn't respond, just to make sure that they aren't in the, the audience at this point. We had David Wenglakowski from Titusville. We had Hannah Lovell Tombleedies from Cocoa. We had Linda Fisher from Melbourne, and Bill Jones from Cocoa. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. Well, amazingly, that is it for the cards on this item. I'll defer to the commission on what they want to do, if they want to recess for five minutes, just to kind of reorient, or if you want to go into discussing the comments and, and the proposal, or how you all want to handle it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If we're going to discuss a proposal, there was not one in the packet. I'm not against a five-minute or 10-minute. If you could just, if you plan on making a motion, can you tell us what a mandatory mask ordinance or would even entail?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, let's, here's what we'll do. If everyone's all right with it, let's take 10 minutes, because I know it's hard to reconvene within five, and then we'll, we'll try to power through this. I will tell you, just with respect to the next item, whoop, I apologize. We don't have anywhere near as many comments. We have less than a third the number of comments, so I do think the next item is going to go a little bit quicker. I will do everything I can to get those folks addressed quickly. I do think, given the, the relative scarcity in comparison with the earlier number, we probably should bump it back up to three minutes. If you all want to keep it at two, I'll do that, though. I'm, you know, I'm flexible. What do you all think?
I like two.
You like two? Okay, well, I'm hearing that at least the majority here wanted it two minutes, so we will keep it at two minutes. Obviously, I'm trying to be flexible, where if someone hasn't finished a sentence, they can finish their sentence at the end of two, though. So we'll, we'll reconvene in about 10 minutes here. It is about 3:02, so 3:12 we'll reconvene. Thank you all.